Okay, thank you everyone. Will you all stand up? We're gonna do an invocation with Pastor Rob Keck.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening just thanking you for each and every blessing that you've placed upon our lives. We thank you for this, uh, this day, Lord, and this time that we can gather together here and and discuss and work out the, uh, the issues of this county, Lord. We just pray that each and every council member and each member of the Board of Commissioners, Lord, would seek your guidance in your direction and the leadership of, of this county. We pray that each and every one of us would do as you have called us to do to love our neighbors as we love ourselves. I pray, dear God, that each one of us humble ourselves before you and, and one another, treating each other with respect. Lord, we just thank you for everything that you have, have given us. We thank you for your love and your kindness and your mercy and your grace. And we pray and we ask all of this in your mighty and precious name, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A special work session of the Marshall County Council and Board of Commissioners. When I'll come to you. We have, uh, ten members on here. If the members of the, uh, council and the Board of Commissioners would identify themselves in a position, starting with you, Greg.
Greg Compton, County Council.
Brandon Schreit, County Council.
William Patterson, County Council.
Adam Thunstich, County Commissioner.
Tim Harmon, County Council.
Ian Clots, Commissioner.
Jesse Bohannon, Commissioner.
Nicole Cox, County Council.
Deb Johnson, County Council.
Jim Masterson, County Council.
Thank you. So, uh, we also have a lot of members, uh, from the sewer board apparently. We have some folks, uh, I believe from the Health Department here. Uh, some folks who may offer some septic solution, uh, testimony. We have a wide of local officials. Uh, and welcome some very active folks who support and oppose the sewer project. We also have the media here as well. We are being livestreamed. Tonight is just a work session. We cannot take any official action, but we can talk a lot about the issue before us. Um, we are here today because a large group of Marshall County residents have become concerned with the sewer project around the lakes. There's a lot of angst and some frustration. Many citizens of Marshall County are looking to their elected leaders for help. So much so that the county commissioners have taken some action. I'm gonna get into this, uh, a little bit more. Uh, but before we dive in, I think this is very important, that whether you support the sewer district or oppose it, we can all agree to be respectful and cordial to one another. Can you all do that?
Sure.
Said this before and I'll say it again. You can be a good guy and support the sewer project. You can also be a good guy and oppose the sewer project. So let's just walk out of here with friends. We all have a lot in common. We all have that is uncommon, okay? Um, here's the format and some rules. Uh, to start, I'll be giving a brief summary of just where we are, how we got here. Uh, these are my personal remarks, many of them, and obviously the, uh, members here will be allowed to make their own remarks, but these are my personal remarks. We'll follow it up with some topics for the members to discuss. We will also allow public input and some, uh, we'll cap it off with some further discussion amongst ourselves, okay? Um, I will moderate this discussion with Mr. Clots, and from time to time, it will be appropriate to have a back and forth exchange, perhaps inviting the folks, uh, before us to take part, but it is important that we remain orderly and respectful. Um, I'd expect this meeting to last a couple hours and we may have to recess and, uh, we'll do that if, if we, we find it necessary. So, any questions? Okay, I'm gonna begin. Again, this is just a PowerPoint that I put together. It also served to guide us along in our discussion. What's the history background? This is not a complete exhaustive, uh, research, but, uh, back in, uh, twenty fourteen, the Seattle Water Conservation District of Marshall County commissioned a study with some grant funds. And, uh, the purpose was to, uh, to address non-point source water pollution in the headwaters of the Yellow River watershed. The study was completed in, uh, twenty eighteen. It was a three hundred and seven page report. I've looked through a lot of it. Um, in it, there was some elevated levels of, uh, E coli that were identified. Shortly after, there was a Marshall County crew matter task force. It was formed in June of twenty nineteen, I believe. Uh, but the county commissioners and the county council did approve some funding, I believe it was fifty thousand dollars for a water study at the request of the Health, uh, the Health Department and some local officials. Uh, the end result was a recommendation to form the Regional Sewer District. Uh, on February twenty first, twenty twenty-two, a public meeting was held by the Marshall County Commissioners as the first step to the possible creation of a regional sewer district. On March of twenty twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners and the County Council passed a joint resolution to petition IDAM to form a sewer district. The vote was not unanimous. In December of twenty twenty-two, IDAM formally approves a petition to create the sewer district, and the Marshall County Regional Sewer District is officially formed. Couple of items I wanna touch on. I'm gonna touch on that study just a little bit, and I'm gonna talk about the joint resolution in March of twenty twenty-two. Again, these are my personal comments. Um, again, there's a study on the headwaters, uh, Yellow River. There was a water management, uh, plan, watershed management plan crafted. And this is a slide in which, um, the, uh, folks who are, um, uh, supporting the sewer district, some of them anyway, have sent me this information, and so I had to look into it. And it talks about the, uh, E coli in the headwaters of the Yellow River. There were four samples taken, and it says, uh, "Samples collected from the Yellow River suggest that the primary source of E coli to the Yellow River is human in origin." In fact, it says eighty percent of insight was human in origin. So I had to kinda look into this because when there was four samples, I thought, that's not enough. And if you look in the back of the, uh, study, there's a lot of, uh, site, uh, data, and I dug through it and I found out this. That two hundred and thirty-five, uh, column forming units is kind of the threshold that the state uses as a number to decide when it's safe or not for recreational use. And we actually look at the sample data. It shows in site one, eleven and twelve, three out of the four samples, the human E coli was so low, it was not marked really unsafe. The site number four, the human E coli was barely over two thirty-five. Uh, I do have to raise a question because it seems like site four and two have the same exact measurement. But either way, you can look at this study and say, wow, fifty percent of it was human E coli, but when you break it down, three of the four samples show that the human E coli really was not in a dangerous level. Um, what's the source of the human E coli? Who knows? Is it combined sewer overflowers? We know that plenty of those had those recently. Is it scheduled dumping from treatment plants? I just learned a couple of days ago that a treatment plant apparently can dump into the river in the cold months, um, without, I think, reporting or taking measurements. Uh, could it be direct dumping to ditches? I've heard that certain septic systems are, are not evenly septic. It goes septic to a field tile and straight into the ditch. So maybe those folks really don't even have a septic system. Is it other illegal dumping? Could it be failed systems? Sure, real, real marriage, I believe, could be a possibility, but what was the source? I think, you know, before we make policy decisions, it must be driven by evidence and not by speculation, and I think it's very important. I wanna get back to, um, the March second, or March, uh, fourteenth meeting in twenty twenty-two. Um, again, these are some, uh, information that's important. Again, there was a public, uh, meeting on sewer, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Seventy-five to eighty-five dollars a month was the rate that was presented at the public meeting. That's the only rate I ever saw. Three weeks later, on March fourteenth, the county council votes on a resolution to approve the formation of a sewer district. The resolution passes five to two. Uh, myself and Mr. Bohannon did not vote for it. On April second, twenty twenty-two, the rate estimate from the financial advisor is disclosed to be as high as two hundred and eight dollars a month. I think that's very, very important. This is the letter from the financial advisor showing the date. The amount is below, and it's two hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, to be exact. Again, this was not disclosed to us at the time of the vote, and I think that was very, very, uh, important because I've heard comments that if the rates were over a hundred or two hundred dollars, it's not something we can support.
Mister, Mister President, does that mean that that data was released to the public, um, after both the Board of Commissioners and the council voted to form the district?
Perhaps. I mean, you were there. I don't recall. I just know I received more information. You received no information. The only thing that we had to go on was seventy-five to eighty-five dollars a month in a public meeting, and then three weeks later, we vote on it. Three weeks later, another number was presented. It would've been nice to know if it was two hundred and eight dollars on March fourteenth because in my conclusion, uh, to form the Regional Sewer District, both bodies had to approve a joint resolution, and a timely disclosure of the sewer, of the high sewer estimates may have affected the outcome of the council vote and the creation of the district altogether. And again, you were there, I was there. I would've thought, think this is one of the, uh, biggest concerns of people is the class, and I, I surely think it had to have some sort of impact or influence on the vote. Uh, with that out in my comments, and I do, uh, have some topics for the members to discuss here. Uh, there's been some, I think, misinformation. There's concerns out there. Just wanna address it to kinda set the record clear. Um, here's a comment we hear a lot. Sewer was promised two million dollars by the county, then five hundred thousand dollars. Jesse, can you speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, so just to give everybody a, a timeline on where all these numbers came from. Um, in twenty twenty-one, uh, when the, uh, American Rescue Plan funds were initially released to the county, uh, we on the council, uh, were given very short notice on, um, the, the need to vote for a plan. The federal government required the county to come up with a plan for how to disperse our, uh, roughly nine million dollars in the American Rescue Plan funds, and, um, at the time, the only things that we were allowed to spend that money on were, um, infrastructure such as broadband, um, drinking water, infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure, or to give the funds to local nonprofit organizations. Those were the only permissible uses at, uh, at the time that we created the plan. We were told, um, that, uh, the plan just needed to be passed because, um, without a plan, we would not receive any money. And that it was adjustable as we went along the way, but that we needed to pass something that day because if we didn't, we wouldn't receive the nine million dollars. Several months later, the federal government told us that, uh, we could take up to ten million dollars as quote-unquote "lost revenue", um, basically to replace any additional expenditures the county had to take to get through the, uh, the COVID situation. Uh, so the county took the, uh, the, the nine million dollars as lost revenue, and I believe it was the, the sense of, at least some of us, that because we took it as lost revenue, it would be, um, it would be the right thing to do to spend it for regular government expenses as opposed to giving it away. So, um, the, uh, the plan changed, and, um, when, uh, when the vote came up to, uh, to adopt the, um, the two million dollars for the, uh, for the sewer district, I believe that vote failed. Uh, was it five to two, Mister President?
It, it failed five to two. Uh, keep in mind, it was a recommendation from the commissioners. Um, and then the process follows that the county council will approve or not approve. And again, it was a five to two vote against. Um, you know, that's, that's the process we have. Those are the checks and balances.
Against what? Against two million dollars?
Well, there was a resolution to appropriate two million dollars along with a, a bunch of other things, and it was voted down.
For the sewer district.
Right, yeah. Two million dollars was supposed to go into sewer.
Yeah.
As the resolution was presented to the county council, five to two, the county council decided to vote against the package.
And that was, and that was twenty twenty-two, so that was before many of the members here, uh, took office, so.
June, I think it was actually June twenty twenty-two.
Yeah. Um, so in twenty twenty-three, um, when there was still, uh, some remaining ARPO funds, uh, available, um, and, uh, when we saw the, uh, the possibility that some folks were gonna face large hookup costs, um, and that it may cause, um, some people to, to possibly lose their homes over that, um, the council decided to set aside five hundred thousand dollars to assist with, uh, sewer hookup costs for people that demonstrated financial need. That, that money is still available, um, within county funds. Um, it hasn't been necessarily put into a separate account, but it's something that's been an ongoing conversation between all of us, the, the realization that we do have this half a million dollars obligation out there. So, um, you know, depending on how things work out, um, we, we wanna make sure that that's still available to assist folks or to assist with, with whatever way this, this comes out, so.
Well, and I'll jump in there. It's a half a million dollars. Is it for District One, District Two, Project Three, Project Four? So we have a lot of other folks potentially that could need some help. So that will be an ongoing discussion. And I think we've explained that pretty well. Let me go on to another area of concern. Um, that's the big one, the spending by the sewer board. Uh, Councilmember Cox had made some statements at her last meeting. Uh, she was looking into the finances. Uh, actually, other people have looked into the finances. Well, you weren't the only one, and can you help us out on that?
Well, I reached out and I had to actually file to get the, the, um, finances, and, um, it took a couple of weeks, but I got an email with all sorts of documents. And so I went there and actually put them into a spreadsheet, and, um, up through May, that's all I'd gotten was through May. Um, the sewer board had spent one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. And I started to kinda break it down, and earlier in the year, the commissioners had asked them to please stop spending. We're spending, we have not received any grants. We had applied for grants, I'm told, but also it was confusing because in the sewer meeting, um, President McFadden would use the word "grant" and, um, "loan", he kept calling the SRF loan a "grant", and that was confusing because that's not what it is. Grant is free money. It's our taxpayer dollars money, but it's free money that you don't have to pay back. An SRF loan is a low interest loan that you have to pay back. And, um, so we had not received any grant dollars, and the original proposals that I had read through said that they were banking, um, even the Baker Tilly said they were, they were counting on grant dollars to come through. This project will move forward if grant dollars come through. No grant dollars came through. So we're spending. We don't have grant dollars. With the grant dollars, we might be able to be in that seventy-five to eighty-five dollar range. Um, they continue to spend, and so then I just added up. For March, we spent sixty-seven thousand dollars. In April, eighty-two thousand dollars. And in May of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, seventy-three thousand dollars. But I haven't even seen June or July's. I haven't asked for June or July's yet. Um, but that's the amount of spending that's happening. Um, Baker Tilly is a consultant that they use, and, uh, one of the things that Baker Tilly does is they charge you for your drive time. So there's all sorts of bills where Jeff Rowe charged one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars just to attend a meeting. Um, that includes his round trip travel, um, to, and he charged us that in March of twenty twenty-four, March sixth, March thirteenth, and then again on May, um, twentieth of twenty twenty-four, we spent one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars just to have him be at a meeting and present. Um, and then he also charges mileage as well, so we gave him another sixty-one dollars and fifty, fifty-seven cents. That's just the beginning of my digging. Um, the, it, the, the spending from Baker Tilly is just astronomical, and there are other consultants that can do just as good of a job, if not better, for a whole lot less.
Can I, can I clarify real quick? You're talking about the, the board spent that money.
Yes, this is under the sewer board, all of their invoices, um, that I received.
The, um, the estimate for, was it a, what was the original estimate? You said it was not possible, eighty to a hundred dollars.
Same, we, 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 we're public reading seventy-five to eighty-five dollars.
Eighty-five to eighty-five dollars, yeah.
That was gonna be the monthly fee.
And that, that, that is still remains to be an estimate, and it's not as though that grant is completely, uh, out of the question. We, we still have an application in the state, and it's very typical, it might take two or three or four years to approve that. There, there are twelve sewer districts that get approved by the state. It's a very formal process, and we were, I mean, like, twenty-something, in the low twenties the first year, and then the second year, we moved up to forty-two, I think. But it's very likely that we'll eventually get it and we'll move down. Now, when you say, uh, it, you know, the two hundred dollars per month is, is if we had, uh, no fines at all and we had to completely pay it out of the, uh, taxpayer's pocket. And that, which is very unlikely that, I think, the sewer board would even approve, uh, anything of that nature. And I, I, I can see some shaking their heads of agreeing with me on that. The, um, so, you know, what you're saying when you say, "We lost a grant", that isn't true, is it?
We did not receive the grant.
We did not receive, yes, but you were dying.
We did not receive the grant.
To the people here, that we were, we wouldn't have that grant, and that is untrue.
No, we're continuing to move.
No, we're, no, we're. But no one here knows.
In fact, but why would we continue to spend outrageous amounts of money if we don't know that we have the grant? Why don't we pull in full tight and wait until that grant comes through?
Well, it, it does cost money to do engineering, to do all the investigation. You mentioned about Baker Tilly, um, uh, coming to the, the, the board meeting, charging them. We got charged, uh, the council got charged by our attorney, and he didn't even show up to the meeting the last time. I mean, there are, there, he is involved in these companies that do these, uh, works for us. He's paid that gladly. We all, everybody voted yes, except me.
Well, he met, he met with members, he met with members before him on, on that issue, that staying in the sewer.
He's smart, just for it.
They have no funds. We gotta, we need to discuss that in a different meeting. They have no revenue. So when we have no revenue, this is all bet. This is all bet. So you're getting most of these people out here in this district, putting them in debt with a lot of money spent, we're looking at seventeen hundred dollars a household right now, bet. Every household, seventeen hundred dollars, on the hope and prayer, maybe someday we'll beat this.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm telling what I'm saying, that if you're looking down the road, maybe we'll get this, maybe, maybe we won't. If you look at the grants, a lot of the grants have to have twenty-five, thirty percent of community match, and we not having it.
I'm not, I agree or disagree with you on that statement at all. What I'm saying is, we just implied that, uh, that there's no way it's gonna cost eighty or seventy million dollars. And that, that, that we didn't get a grant, which is true, but the way it was said is like, we would never get the grant. And that is not true at all.
Their county from, had two members of, Mr. Harmon wants to go back to that slide. He'll see if we have a grant, and I don't know how they came up with a magical number of fifteen million dollars, uh, fifteen point six million dollar grant. Uh, zero grant, this was at the beginning, they're saying two hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents a month. With this grant of fifteen billion dollars, which is an incredible grant to get, takes you down to just nine to five. Maybe we have that, we have, you know this, the facts are, we do not have a grant. The facts are, we went backwards and went forwards and didn't, uh, low interest loans or any, uh, financial assistance from that. And that's the fact, and we do know we're going in debt, uh, the attorney's here today. He's probably not here free of charge. That's more debt.
Okay, what is our attorney?
Not free of charge. But, 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 hold on, let's see.
I just wanna correct something. So the list that you're talking about, Mr. Compton, that they were on the list, and they were like number twenty-four on the list, that was not for a grant. That was for an SRF loan.
Yeah.
So when you're saying they were on the list, that is correct, but that was not for a grant. That was for a low interest loan. However, Mr. McFadden likes to confuse those two terms, and he calls SRF loans grants in the sewer district meeting, and it's not the same.
We, we are, we are in the system for a grant or a low interest loan or a combination of both. That is a fact. What, does anybody disagree with that here, Mister President?
No. Would, would, would one of our deputies be, uh, willing to go down to the south door downstairs and, uh, let the council attorney in?
Let's move on to the next topic. We can come back to this. We have an opportunity, okay? So this is an area that was a petition. So, yeah, two and a half years ago, uh, when the petition, I think, was, uh, you know, approved, the board started meeting. A three-member advisory board should've been created. There was supposed to be a member from, a representative from the Board of Commissioners, the surveyor, and I believe the Health Department. Is that correct? Jess, I know you would like to speak on this. If you were one of the three members of the advisory board, what would you say?
I would've said that, uh, it would not be prudent to move forward and spend three million dollars before we know whether or not we have a grant.
The, the point is that, you know, the board has advisors, you know, that are paid, and that's fine. But the petition set up for somewhat of a citizen advisor, so to speak, or, or, you know, a people who know, uh, the, the commissioners, again, the Health Department, uh, and the surveyor, and these folks were to give advice. They could've probably said, you know, "We have a consultant that we use for municipal advice, and he doesn't charge for drive time, and his rates are far cheaper than yours. This would've been an opportunity to save some money, am I, okay?"
And I would've, and I would've also recommended that, um, that you look at other engineering firms as well. Um, it, when, I don't know that it's a good practice to have the engineering firm who sold you the project also get the project. And it's, you know, that, that's also something that I don't believe was done, to look at, uh, alternatives on, on who might engineer this project.
Okay.
Would anyone else like that? Yeah, the, the engineering firm is well-known throughout our state and some of the sewer districts, and Baker Tilly is, is also, and, and I venture to say, and I don't know this for a fact, but I venture to say that most projects that have been completed started with engineering studies to figure out how much it will cost, and that, that, they, they don't, they do not do that for, uh, for nothing.
Yeah.
And I'm like, they're only given seventy-five thousand dollars to start with. That's what the council gave them to start with.
Yeah. Now, and I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, Mister Compton. I'm just saying that if I were on the advisory board, if there actually had been a member of the commissioners on the advisory board, I would've advised that it would've been good to get some, some proposals from municipal advisors and compare them, and that it would've been good to, you know, put out a, a RFP and consider multiple engineering firms, and I don't know that that was done.
And that's, that's why we have the positions we have, is to make those decisions as well. And, um, you know, we're, we're all here. You know, we're, we're talking about what this board has spent and what it hasn't spent, but all of us here are responsible to the citizens, our, our entire county, and it is not our money we're spending.
I'm the taxpayer.
If I can make a question or a comment, and we, we're looking at a three million dollar bond is what they've borrowed, correct?
It's a bond.
Okay, so if they don't get the grants, we're still liable to pay for this. What also happens if that's not enough money, and they continue to borrow until, or hoping to get a grant in the future? Because if they continue spending in hopes of this, and we don't have money, this million dollars, if it grows past the three million that they're able to borrow, could they borrow ten million dollars, twenty million dollars? Is there a checks and balance for that?
It's unlikely that they would, I don't think they would do that, in, under those circumstances.
I could say that might actually be a need.
The bank is attached to a bond, isn't it?
No.
Either way, it has to be repaid.
So revenue is gonna have to be generated for somewhere.
And I agree with all that. I did, I, 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 I'm, um, I guess my, my issue with most of this is the statistics and the, uh, numbers that we've been calling out saying are wrong are, are not necessarily wrong, and it's inaccurate that the way we're presenting it, including the, uh, uh, the E coli. I, and I, we, we talked about this before. I brought in a study with the, uh, um, uh, water system in Marshall, I'm close, uses, and it has a standard of one hundred and twenty-six, uh, is what is, what the value they use, which is also the study that was based on, which is one hundred and twenty-six, that I had taken last year.
Oh, just hold on, let me do this, sir. In the paper, it, it clearly stated, on a one, once a month sample, the level is two hundred and thirty-five. That study was a once a month sample, and so the two thirty-five number applies. And again, you know.
The two thirty-five, I can't exactly what the two thirty-five number is, the two thirty-five is, we're, we're, by the statutes of Indiana, and I, and, and I'm, this is just with conversations I've had with, uh, people who know, um, we are obliged to keep the, the E COLI number up in Yellow River below one hundred and twenty-six. That's what the standard should be. If it's not, we're in trouble with the state. When we do have a heavy rain and a flood and there has to be a release, which happens in communities all over the United States, um, that, that value can never, we can, we can do a controlled, uh, release into the river, but it can never be over two thirty-five. This, this is where that number comes from.
Yeah.
But I have the study written with you, but I can make copies of it anywhere, wherever you actually.
So, so I, it, it seems to me like you're in, you're in favor of the project, Mr. Compton, and I, like I said, everybody gives their other opinion about it. My, my question is, um, how likely is it that the, um, that the project at the lakes area, how likely is the thirty million dollar sewer system at the lakes area going to resolve the E COLI issue in the headwaters of the Yellow River?
Well, you know, and I never said, I never said that. I was, I was, but that's, but that's what we're talking about, I was, I was, what I was saying is that the numbers that we've been quoting are inaccurate. And I would just like to have our numbers.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna proceed.
Including the, uh, uh, whatever it costs and what, what, in, including us not having grants already.
We don't know for what it is.
We don't know, and I, I don't even know it again.
So if you're, if you spend money like this, maybe we will. I always bet in the public support, and a lot of these people are down here because they're happy with the sewer board.
I think, let's let our Jim Osmond jump in. I think we're gonna have to move along a little bit here, but I was on the council when this was approved with the Commissioners, and the numbers that were talked about were reasonable numbers to connect to the sewer system. And the numbers that they talked about were seventy-five to eighty-five dollars a month. And I was here and some of you other people were here. Um, and I do not know about the follow-up, whether that actually happened or not, but we need to resolve something here, and we can't spend money that we don't have, number one. And I, you know, I agree and disagree with the people here. I just basically wanna say that I would like to hear from the people on the sewer board because they're gonna know the numbers and they're gonna know what their procedures are better than any of us guessing, okay? And I also, if the Health Department's here, I'd also like to hear from the Health Department because I feel that this is their field of expertise and they can enlighten us on a lot of questions that we can banter back and forth with for a long time.
We'll, we'll get to that, I, I.
Did you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I voted for that, we were on the council. We were really ingenious, so, I mean, that, that's, that's.
But I'm telling you that when that come forward, the numbers were a low amount to connect, and seventy-five to eighty-five dollars a month for the fee, and, and I said, well, I guess I'll have to pay that because I have a high-end mill pump and I just put in seventeen thousand dollar septic system and I didn't give you that. And, and you, if you remember, I, I said to him that if it comes to the case to where it was affordable to do that and I come by, that my nephews that live in our house, they are disabled, that I would connect that house to that sewer if that's what we actually needed to do, okay? But when we don't have actual numbers to talk about and people have not put out any bids for anything to see where the hard numbers are, it's hard to second guess what's going on because we obviously have people that know what they're doing that are on both those boards, and I think we should respectfully listen in tonight after we do.
We will.
Over this little bit, okay?
Let's just move on to the next, you know, topic area. This has been a comment that's been bandied about. The order from IDAM is clear, you, the sewer board, are to replace septic with sewer. I know, uh, Mr. Shattuck had a conversation with the director of IDAM, I believe, and he even sent me an email.
We got an email from, uh, Mr. Clint Woods, he's the Commissioner of IDAM, had a meeting with him. This was his response, I sent him a list of quotes, um, from various sewer board members and their attorney, specifically, um, this, uh, that we have been ordered, uh, to do this by IDAM. And his response was, we disagree with the characterization of these activities being ordered pursuant to the action by our agency. So we do not see that it is in order, uh, to proceed with this project, either, either way.
And here's what disturbs me about that, Mr. Shattuck, is that I know that, um, Mr. Woodward presented that exact same information to the sewer board months ago, and he was just ignoring. And yet the, the line continues to come out, you know, meeting after meeting, IDAM has ordered us to replace septic with sewer, which is simply not true.
Okay. Uh, moving on, here's another comment. The state does not allow the county Health Department to grant a variance to repairs, presumably within fifty foot of a wall. Marcella Ben, the county council's attorney, also happens to be the Saint Joe, Saint Joe County Health Department attorney, he has a lot of expertise on that. Marcell, what do you guys do in Saint Joe County if you have to replace the septic that's failing?
You wanna grab the mic then, Marcell, so people can hear you.
He's pretty soft spoken.
Sure. Um, the health department, he's a good judgment for replacing existing systems. So that statement is not true. Uh, the county Health Department can, under Indiana law, issue replacement permits for existing systems that have failed. Um, once again, it's, it's a good judgment standard. If the health department's not doing that here, then I'm a little bit confused as to what they do with fail systems for existing homes. I mean, I, there, there's no way that there are systems that have not failed along the lake that have not been replaced. So I think they are using that standard, it, it's, it's used throughout the state.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that they put people on pumping hall.
Pumping hall is an option, there's a statute for pumping hall. That's, I mean, let's say that I've got a small lot that I wanna build a big mansion on, on a lake, that I can't put a septic system on, I could in fact enter into a pumping hall agreement with the county Health Department. Um, the statute requires a contract with the county Health Department, um, and a contract with the pumping hall contractor that allows, uh, regular pumping halls, you have to have an alarm on the system so that once it's two-thirds full, the alarm goes off. And there's all kinds of stuff in the statute that's allowed. Uh, that's a separate statute, you know, we're talking about here, the good judgment statute, but that is another option.
Yeah.
Don't you say that in Saint Joe County, I guess that there's no other option, they sometimes go in and excavate, take the old out, put the new in with new dirt, is that what they do up there?
Once again, that, that would be under the, the good judgment, I mean, sometimes when you've got these old failed systems and you don't have enough room to, to put it anywhere else on the lot, yes, you, you, you take out the old system, you excavate the soil, you put new soils in, and you replace it in the same location, that, that would be one of the, the good judgment approved, uh, remedies under the statute.
Yeah. And, and again, Mr. President, one more thing that, that disturbs me about how this process has gone is that the public has been told time and time again that there is only one option, and that option is to build a sewer system. We were told that at the presentation on council, that there was only one option, and what we've seen over the last couple of months from public testimony is that there are lots of other options.
Okay. Tim, I have seen around Marshall County where they've done best judgment calls, where they're closer than a fifty feet, I've seen that happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, next one, there's limited to the options available for the failed septic, we kinda went over that. Um, there's a lot of public opposition, I think this is worth noting, um, Mr. Woodward, you're very welcome to come up here and speak right now if you would. I know he's going around, uh, with, with some volunteers and you guys are doing a petition. And you've got your ear to the ground and you know the pulse of the district, and, uh, what are you, what are you seeing?
We, of the people we get to talk to, now, we've had several people out surveying and taking a petition, and we're in the high eighties, low nineties average of people we talked to against it. A lot of people are against it because of the cost and a lot of people confront it and they say, it's not about me, it's about why should somebody else be forced to sell their home when they don't have a problem and somebody else does have a problem and there's options out there? So if they're cost-effective options, why should somebody be forced out? And so a lot of the people that confront it, they're against it, not because of them, it's because of these other people. And so the community is, is standing together and currently, we've got about eight hundred signatures of people that say they are against it. And that's not all of the PSA areas either, you know, we haven't been to several of them, but like I say, to the people we talked to, overwhelmingly against it. What about PSA one? Same thing, PSA one, it, we don't, I don't have the exact numbers because when, when people run out, some people tracked every address they went to, you know? Okay, so this person wasn't home, so they left it blank, this person said no, this person said yes, but, so I don't, I can't tell you exact numbers, but it seems like we're close to two hundred and fifty, three hundred homes in PSA one that are against it. Uh, we've got thirty residents out, a little over thirty residents out in Latonka, and quite a few residents out there who are afraid to sign because of actions from their neighbors and, and McFadden's name was mentioned even, you know, so, and we've had quite a few people that are just on the fence and they say, I don't wanna get involved. I shouldn't say quite a few, we have people, but the majority of people, like I say, it's in the high eighties, low nineties of people that are against it, of the people we talked to.
It's not a percentage.
Percentage, yes, percentage. We have, and like I say, we've probably had a dozen people out talking to people, you know? And I've asked them all, in fact, when Lady Kingin tonight, and she says, of all the people she talked to in her neighborhood, and she had about, I think she had close to, close to a hundred names, two people said no, that they, they were for it. Everybody else signed the petition, and we've had people, all day young, yesterday, people were coming to my house to sign it, 'cause I put a thing up on my website that said I gotta have these petitions in today. I got phone call after phone call after phone call, people showing up, it was revolving door at my house.
Yeah. And, and Mr. President, I, I would like to note that, that Mr. Woodward is a appointee of the Commissioners to the Sewer Board, but the board has refused to seat him, um, and so that's, that's also an ongoing issue, so.
Yeah.
But over, overwhelmingly, I, I, the response is they're against it.
Okay. Thank you, uh.
Let me ask one.
Absolutely, you can ask one question.
You have an organization, it's called what?
Neighbors Against Marshall County Regional Service.
Okay. All right, I mean, that's where you're coming from with all this.
So, does that make any difference? I mean, if, if somebody went out petitioning, we don't tell them we're against it, we go up to them, we say, have you heard about the sewer?
And you know, and I, and I, I'm all for you, um, acquiring support, I mean, that's the, the American way, no doubt. Uh, but what I do disagree with probably is with temperament that I've seen on Facebook and, uh, of somebody who's for it, they go after them. We had a, um, uh, somebody who wrote in and honestly wrote surveying, uh, um, uh, council people as well, and they wanted to stay anonymous because they were afraid of the feedback from, uh, the people against the sewer.
So let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Does that go both ways? Because I've been on the people's bench, my wife has been on the people's bench.
I agree.
So what's your point?
My point is, you attack me, I've never seen you attacked from the other way, really.
Well, I'm sorry.
And I'm sure you've heard some feedback from it as well, but, uh, you know, I've been attacked by several people out here and, and several people on the board as well. Um, and I, and I, I, and I'm, I still, I still am not for or against, uh, um, having a sewer system in SP one.
So, long time ago, I was.
I'm just trying to make sure that we stay honest about it.
Long time ago, I was told, actions speak louder than words, your actions are you for the sewer. And I'm gonna tell you something, I'm being honest, I'm telling you what people are telling us, I'm not trying, if people says, I don't know, we give them, we give them information. And they choose whatever they want, we ask them, what if, have you heard about sewer? What do you know about it? Are you for or against? If they say they're against, we say, okay, will you sign petition? Are we educating a little more? If they say they're for it, okay, fine, and then we leave them, we don't say.
Could we give an honest answer to answer your question?
Ask me.
Well, have you, has anybody ever said no, and then you've teamed up with other people and gone back to?
No.
No, I've heard that, that's happened.
If you heard that, somebody's lying to you because you don't.
I have heard that.
For starters, it's usually one person at a time, and if somebody says no, okay, fine, that's it. We don't try and argue with them, we don't try and convince them, if they say no, that's it. So whatever you heard, somebody's saying the same thing like, um, okay, we went for a grant, let it SRF, I heard that too, but that doesn't make it true, does it? Okay, let's.
We've had, we, we have, we have applied for a minute, and the application is still there.
An SRF grant?
That's what I'm saying.
Let's, let's move on, I got, I got, thank you, but I got one more topic. I, I promise those who wanna speak in favor of the sewer will be allowed to, we just need to get through our portion here, we're on a some, we'll get to the public comment here in a section. Intermittently, I will ask people to come up, you know, during the back and forth, that I thought that was appropriate because, you know, uh, Mr. Woodward obviously is, is very involved. Uh, and again, those who are for it can come up here, just give me a second. Uh, last topic, it's kind of the one that's in the, uh, public right now, and, and that is the Commissioner oversight in the pending lawsuit. Um, Sean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, do you wanna speak on this one? I'm gonna put you on the hot seat, I guess, to talk about Commissioner oversight, uh, maybe the Commissioners can talk about it too, but I think it's an important area just to address.
Yeah, so, uh, the Commissioner's point of view is that when they, they petitioned IDAM, um, that, uh, one, the, um, the state statutes that allow for the creation of these districts, um, can, can be structured in one of two ways, that the district can be set up where the Board of Trustees that governs the district, uh, those members can be elected or they can be appointed, um, and the, um, governing entity that initiates the, um, the creation, this, in this instance, the county, um, is the one that can, uh, craft, uh, how, uh, in appointed districts, how those members can be qualified and appointed. And, uh, what the Commissioners did in their petition, uh, there's language that talks about, um, that, uh, a vacancy for any reason in the, a seat on the Board of Trustees of the sewer district, uh, will be filled, uh, by the appointing authority for that district. And so the appointing authorities for this district are, five of the, of the board seats are appointed by the Commissioners, there's one by the county council, and one by the Mayor of Plymouth. So, uh, it's their, uh, the Commissioners position that that language that was used in the position and the petition that says a vacancy for any reason is consistent with language that Indiana courts have interpreted to, uh, be synonymous with at-well service or at the pleasure of the appointing authorities, uh, service, so, um, that the members that they point to the board serve at their pleasure. And so, uh, with that in mind, um, they, they think that the language in the original petition is sufficiently clear to establish that, but, uh, just to be even more so clear, um, using the authority under the Indiana Home Rule Act, uh, which allows any government entity, uh, when, uh, when there's not a state law that, uh, already prescribes how they can conduct their business, um, it allows them to fill that void basically and create their own law that would apply. So beyond just the language in the petition, they went ahead and adopted a home rule ordinance that says, this is what we meant when we adopted, when we crafted this petition, that the members of the Board of Trustees, the Marshall County Regional Sewer District, serve at the pleasure of the authority that appointed them. So after adopting that, then, um, uh, they had, they had offered Mr. McFadden, uh, invited him to come, uh, schedule a meeting that it would, uh, be convenient for him to come and address some of the concerns that they had been hearing at a Commissioners meeting. Uh, he wrote back, uh, and said that, uh, that he wasn't gonna come to the Commissioners meeting, he can come to one of our meetings sometime. And, uh, after that, the Commissioners decided to declare his seat on the Board of Trustees vacant, and, uh, then they subsequently appointed, uh, Mr. Woodward to fill that vacancy. Um, after that, um, the, the Board of Commissioners was, uh, advised that, uh, Mr. McFadden was not going to acknowledge that, uh, his, uh, removal and that, uh, he had a different legal interpretation of, um, of the petition and, uh, did not believe that they have the authority to remove him, that he was appointed for a four-year term and that he could only be removed for showing of just cause. So, uh, with that, uh, the boards, uh, the board and Mr. McFadden being at odds, um, we proceeded to file a lawsuit that is, uh, now, uh, before the Elkhart Superior Court Number Two. Um, and, uh, since the, since then, uh, the Commissioners have amended their lawsuit to add an additional, uh, party, and Mr. Woodward is. uh, party, and Mr. Woodward has now, uh, partied the lawsuit as well, uh, you know, asserting that, uh, he should be, uh, seated and Mr. McFadden replaced. The commissioner have asked the, uh, for that relief and as well for the court to interpret the initial IDAM petition and the ordinance to, uh, declare that they do have the authority to remove him. So, uh, there's been a motion to dismiss the lawsuit, um, that, uh, was originally filed. Uh, when we amended our complaint, that, that made that original, uh, motion that Mr. McFadden's counsel filed moot. Uh, they've indicated they're gonna file a, uh, another motion to dismiss and, uh, which will be forthcoming soon. And the court set that motion to dismiss for a hearing on October the tenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Serisi, did, did we sue the sewer board?
No, uh, the commissioners sued Mr. McFadden.
And who's defending Mr. McFadden?
Uh, the, as my understanding, that the sewer board, uh, voted to authorize, uh, their counsel to represent Mr. McFadden.
Okay. So, uh, the commissioners have five appointments. They're up in what, a year, year and a half, two years?
Staggered.
Staggered. I think you have four appointments, you just appointed, uh, Judge Colvin. Um, the council has another appointment, that's oversight. City of Plymouth, I think, just appointed, uh, Don Ecker, reappointed him. But isn't there some rate, uh, authority that you guys have that can approve the rates of the district? I thought they might be district authority, someone has to have a recital on the rates, isn't that the commissioners?
So I, I read the statute, Mr. President, and it appears that as long as commissioners don't serve on the sewer board, that, uh, before, uh, rates can be charged to the, uh, to the rate payers, that the board of commissioners must approve the rates.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
So my, my question is going forward, if, depending on the outcome of this lawsuit, and McFadden is sitting on that board instead of Mr. Woodward, who is liable for that board's actions? Considering that there's a, somebody who's a board member on there making decisions that shouldn't be on there, if that's how the lawsuit goes on.
May I go ahead?
Yeah, I, in general, um, in general, Indiana law, uh, tends to recognize that an official that, uh, has apparent authority, you know, is, that any actions that they take, um, are, um, you can be relied upon. I mean, for, for instance, a, a judge that hasn't been sworn in or, or something like that, if they sit, preside over your trial and nobody objected in, in the, uh, uh, to that in advance, um, the decision goes on as if the person actually was, you know, an authorized judge. I would think that, um, one, it's probably unlikely that, uh, any decisions that are made by the board are gonna be of such a close vote that that would really, uh, would matter. And that likely, um, even, um, anything that was decided probably would, um, he's there on a, a good faith argument that he does have authority, and I don't think there would be any issues with that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Before we move on, Mr. President, um, I would say probably a couple of statements that came from the sewer board, uh, during their meetings, um, helped lead us to this position. Um, on, um, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at the, the sewer board meeting, uh, President McFadden stated, this board is here today because of decisions made by the county commissioners, the county council, and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. We wouldn't be here today if they had not made those decisions. We are here simply carrying out their mandate. We have a fiduciary duty to move this project forward. The only way this board will go out of existence is if the project is not feasible from a financial or operational perspective. So if you have any political complaints, they should not be directed at us. They should be directed at the people who created this board, namely, the county council and the county commissioners.
Okay.
So that's why we're involved.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
Okay, see, go ahead, I have a question for Mr. Serisi. The, um, if one of the commissioners, um, is sued because of what they've done in their government position, would they be obliged to go out and find their own attorney?
So, uh, it's probably, that's a little bit nuanced there. Generally, no, I mean, if it's an official action, the, the government is going to defend, uh, whatever the public official is.
Yes, I just wonder, and I'm looking the same way, Mr. McFadden, um, being represented by, um, a county attorney is. See, I, I would, I would contend to Mr. Captain that, uh, um, it is not in his official capacity that he is refusing to give up the seat. Um, he is acting as an individual in refusing to give up his seat, that's my contention.
That's what I was gonna say, I think their position is that he is no longer a county board member, so he wouldn't be able to vote again, so.
It's also an issue of elected versus, versus appointed.
Okay.
If they don't have the authority to keep him on, that's the county commissioners and us, then he wouldn't be on that board. Therefore, he wouldn't be covered by.
I guess it goes back to lawsuits, the court has to decide that. We haven't decided that, we can't decide that, can we? The court has to decide.
See, we continue.
Fortunately, as lawyers, we, uh, we can make all kinds of accusations about that, but the truth is, the court has to decide that, because we don't know.
Okay. Let's move on to public comment, I'm more.
Real quick, I got, I got a question to ask before we get into public comment. I, I think it's a fair question to ask. And that is, between the time of the public areas before the creation of the sewer district until now, what has changed? And the reason I ask that question is, is everybody pretty much in the county probably pretty familiar with Tiner. And, uh, they raised a holy stink about being in that sewer district, to the point, they were tenacious enough, they got removed from the district. And I think it is a fair question to ask, what conditions about this changed between now and then? That the PSA one area does not feel comfortable with being a part of this.
I, I think, when you go back to February twenty-first at that public meeting for the sewer, that was the first step. It was presented in a way that seemed pretty innocuous. Seventy-five to eighty-five bucks a month, there's exemptions, we're not, we don't have the ability to tax your property. And honestly, uh, it didn't sound too unreasonable. Uh, but I think the biggest, uh, change has been the possibility of it going to two-twenty, two-thirty. Uh, amps, uh, in your home may not be, uh, enough, so you have to, uh, upgrade your, uh, fuse box. Uh, you now have to pay probably a monthly electric fee to run the grinder pump. Um, the cost to abandon your septic and hook up could be three thousand, twenty thousand. I don't know if the information out there was, you know, presented, uh, at those stark levels, to be honest with you. Uh, that's my take on it, and y'all can disagree or agree, but.
There's a lack of transparency is what you're saying too, with knowing where we're at in that process.
And, and another reason I asked this before the public, public comment version, is maybe that information can be provided to us. Because this needs to be a learning experience for us here in the county. So we don't have to repeat the same mistakes again and go down this pathway again. But, because if we're not learning from it, it's a whole heck of a lot of work and a lot of fighting amongst all of us to do it all over again about ten years.
Yes, we could try to redo this, uh, ten years and, and spend the engineering for money to do.
Brandon, I think part of the issue, and I was there for the, uh, when Tiner was taken out, when Tiner was taken out of the, uh, uh, program, uh, there are just not enough homes there, there's just not gonna be financially feasible, you know? And when you looked at the numbers, it, it just didn't look at all. And so that was part of the reason we moved on to the next one, rather than fight and fight and fight. So.
I wanna say something too, um, that's my district, and, uh, Tiner and Teagarden, um, they got smart people, they did a lot of research. And the studies that were being presented was not adding up. And they were, um, they were digging and finding that the studies that were being presented, um, were not. And they could not show information based on Tiner and Teagarden, that their septic's were, were failing. And they knocked on doors, petitioned and rallied their neighbors to come together and say, we don't want this because this, the, the information that you're giving to us and presenting to us is not adding up and not making sense. And that's the same studies we're questioning now. They were just way ahead of us.
Okay, anyone else want to chime in?
Okay.
I think you gotta volunteer for the first one.
Hold on a second, sir. We're gonna move on to public comment, you'll be first. I would like you guys to restrict your public comments to three minutes. I will, and stand will reserve the right to extend that if the discussion is obviously substantive enough to, uh, warrant it. We have a lot of people that probably love, uh, you know, uh, talk. And we just have to be respectful and, uh, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, my name's Mark Hennig, and I'm from Cook Lake.
Hold on, hold on a second, can you, can you sit and see? We gotta get to the mics, can you say your name, please?
My name's Mark Hennig, uh, I live in Cook Lake.
Okay.
Alright, so, I haven't attended all the meetings, I listened today. You guys have made a decision, and, uh, to begin with, off a numbers of your seventy-five to eighty-five dollars, okay? I don't know, he took a survey, I don't know what numbers he was throwing out there. I've seen and heard people saying two to four hundred dollars, okay? You, if you're gonna consider his survey, you consider what numbers he was pitching to these people to get him to turn around and say no. Okay, I'm not totally for it, I'm not totally against it. If it's something reasonable, as you guys said, yeah. A hundred, a hundred and twenty bucks, less than that, it's, it's reasonable, okay? You guys are getting ready to make another decision on whether to go with this. As he says, you don't know if you got any grant money, okay? My thing is, is the state has issued grant money for this to other areas on a regular basis. What is the normal number, okay? What's considered likely that we're gonna get? If we're gonna deny this and just, again, you may have to revisit this if you deny it, five, seven, ten years down the road, okay? It's gonna cost more, alright? Secondly, you need to find out and get grant money, alright? And find out how much. Now, the county also stated you were gonna give two million, it went down to five hundred thousand, to help people with the costs of removing their septic systems. Okay, you guys are the board. Is the board willing? Maybe there's already fifty thousand set, or five hundred thousand, I'm sorry, set aside. Is there money available the following year and the following year? This is a project that's gonna take many years, okay? I live in a condo association, I'm with the boards, okay? But let's not hastily make a decision until we exactly find out what these people are gonna have to pay. Okay? Sure, I agree with them, two, three hundred dollars, no, it's not worth it. But if we're gonna get grant money, we need to apply for that grant money. Not spend a whole boatload of money until we find out what this is truly gonna cost people. And then have these people make an educated decision as to whether that's feasible, okay? Right now, nobody has exact numbers, we don't know, people are guessing. You've, I've seen people that scare tactics, scaring these people. It's gonna cost this, cost that. Let's, i- if we're gonna do this and down the road, it's probably gonna have to happen, whether it's five years, okay, whether we continue with this in three years, whether it's five years, we gotta readdress it, or you guys have to readdress it in ten years, okay? Bottom line is, before we make a decision, let's find out closer to true numbers and see what you guys can do to help these people then. Besides, and get it close to that two million dollars if you can, before we just make a decision, okay? That's all I'm asking.
Okay, Mr. Cox, we'd like to.
In response, in response to your comments, uh, I will tell you, I've tried to get some raise for the county in other areas this year. I've called numerous places, USDA, every place under the sign, they're just not up there. I'm sorry, people, it's a different climate right now. So to say we're gonna get a grant this year, it sure doesn't look likely, okay? So, that's, so I'm.
For the sewer project, that's a separate fund, there's, there's a separate award, everything is separate fund. And, and, and we're staying in that, uh, pool.
Do you have to tell every year due then?
I don't know, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I agree.
If you don't offer it, you gotta, you gotta apply now. Also, a lot of these grants require, uh, public matching funds, about twenty percent, some of them, of that. I don't, uh, it's, we're not for county, even, I'm interested in doing this, but I can, uh, support.
There are individual grants available to people through USDA, uh, to help with things like this, hang up to ten thousand dollars, if, if you can afford the. And that's something that each individual would have to apply for, for the part that you, uh, have.
Not guaranteed, I mean, you. Not automatically sign up and get the money, it's not gonna happen, put a bank on it. Let's, let's move on, I, you know, I'd like someone from the health department, if they would like to testify.
Hold on, guys, I have a question from the media.
I'm sorry, um, Kathy Badorf asked if the people coming up could sign into something to talk and give the, their name and address?
Okay.
And whether they're in the district.
Okay. It, it's, it's a work session, technically, you don't have to go in all of those details.
Do I have a pen?
Yeah.
We had Mark Hennig write, is it? Okay. And does anybody from the health department wanna come up and speak? If not, is there a representative from the sewer board that would like to speak? Never mind, never mind.
We're gonna put a sheet and a pen down here for your private, from private sector, and you come to speak, please sign in, put your name and address, okay? We know who you are, Doc.
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Hall, Marshall County Health Officer, and representing the Marshall County Health Department. Besides me is Alice Quinn. She is the head of the Septics of Indiana State Department of Health. I felt it might be better for her to answer some of the questions that have been posed, uh, because she's the, I would consider the expert in the area of septic and where we stand in Marshall County. And she has a good feel for that. Um, Dave O'Tel is with us also, and he spends a lot of time up here. If we have questions about what can be put in, what can't be put in, and things of this sort, we always go back to Alice. And, uh, she's always been very good about answering those good questions for us, all the alternatives, what alternatives can we use? You know, what is the rules? And I know that, um, you know, I hear, uh, a lot of the stuff, you know, that some of these systems can do it in other, but we know that we have well over, um, a significant amount of dry well systems around the lake. Those are no longer approved at the present time. And so, that, a dry well system essentially just allows the effluent to run into a barrel, cinder blocks and things of this sort, and directly out. Uh, one of the major concerns I and the health department have, and my job is to protect the wellness and health of the community, is our well system. And a well system is, uh, I'm afraid gonna, if it not already be contaminated because of the effluents that are draining down into the aqua floor, the water underneath, and we're coming up. And so, yeah, we can talk about E. coli, that's one thing in the wells, but pharmaceuticals are really getting to be a problem in a lot of the wells. And I know that in the, uh, report area, they had a right-type septic problem, and they started sampling their wells and there was significant amount of pharmaceuticals in the wells. And so that's really a concern for me as the health officer, and how do we protect this? Um, how, you know, and so I guess the problem all started with me. Because we did this study, and then we found this study, and then we found that there was some contamination, and we broke it down to human and cows and ducks and, and everything else that contaminates. But we did find there was a lot of human contamination. And so based on that, uh, we made the recommendation that maybe we better try an alternative method, because there's not always a good alternative method to failing systems around the lake. And if we wanna do anything, that recreational water, you know, but my concern mainly is what's gonna happen in the future. And I'm looking down the road, um, in the future for protection of the wells in our water system. So, um, I think if anyone wants to address or ask questions about the alternative systems and things of that sort, Alice probably can answer a lot of that questions. All right, Alice, you have anything you wanna say?
Can I ask a question real quick? When you're, when you're talking about pharmaceuticals in the water, how are they getting there? Is that people flushing medication or?
When you're, when you're talking about pharmaceuticals in the water, how are they getting there? Is that people flushing medication or?
Flushing medication, but you know, when you take a pill, it's detoxified, and some of it is excreted either in the urine. The way you get rid of it is it's treated in the urine or in the feces. And so then it goes out, down tank, well, up to the effluent, and if the effluent is not properly handled by the distribution field, then it goes down and penetrates into the aquifer and comes back up.
Thank you for clarifying. How does that show up in, as far as testing is concerned? Right, I know there's like nitrogen and there's phosphorus and there's E. coli.
In a big elaborate test.
Okay.
It's only a thousand dollars per well.
Wow, how much money it costs to put in?
So, how, what's it, how many, um, from the study, how many dry well systems do you have that are failing or, or about, do you have?
We, we know that, we have documentation, over fifty dry well systems that is currently in that. That's the ones we have recorded. Now, because if our records go back, or don't go back far enough, there's a lot of them that if I record it at the present time.
Uh, I got a quick question here. When a septic system fails, does that automatically trigger the testing of a person's well?
No, it does not. The local health department does not have any jurisdiction over a private well or testing of that unless they have an ordinance in place, a local ordinance in place requiring that. And then they can only, um, deal with, uh, well water quality and location. They cannot deal with well construction or anything like that. But no, there's typically not a, a follow-up of the well, uh, sampling after a failed system is identified.
Say the homeowner consents to that after they find out they have a failed septic? Would the health department be able to do that for them?
I don't know. You mean test the well or?
Test, Mr. Allison, so they're, they used to do that by ordinance in adjoining counties. Um, the state statute was recently changed a couple of years ago. That limited the, that limited the county's abilities to test the wells because the state decided that it wasn't a priority. So they limited the amount of testing that could be done, uh, when the, when the septic systems fail. This is one of the battles that St. Joseph County has had with Indiana Department of Health.
Marcel, so if, if a dry well, it would be replaced, it could be replaced with a regular septic in, in St. Joe or what?
It can be replaced with a number of systems that are allowed by the statute. The statute that was changed a couple of years ago, the Indiana Department of Health has a very large section of their code that sets forth the systems that are available throughout the state of Indiana. Any of those systems that are approved can be put on any of the lots in any of the counties in Indiana. Those systems, once approved by the state, are valid everywhere. It's an interesting thing because the soil samples, the soil types are different from the south of the state to the north of the state. East, so the, the, the systems that might work in southern Indiana don't necessarily work in northern Indiana, but they are legally approved by the Indiana Department of Health to work in Marshall County even, because that's, that's the current law.
Okay. One thing I'd like to add, I went to, um, a meeting a while back with the farm bureau. All the construction going on in St. Joe County in the new corral area, they're doing horizontal borings for their water. They're literally using millions of gallons of water per day, and that's coming out of our aquifer. Very, very concerning.
Well, the aquifers are differing. Some of the aquifers overlap, some don't, it depends, there are different ones. But if you wanna talk about concentration of septic systems, St. Joe County has the largest concentration of septic systems in the state and one of the largest concentrations, or highest concentrations in the country.
They also have a lot of nitrates in their, in their drinking water as well. They have some very, very high nitrate areas.
We do, and the state law has changed so that the department of health, the local department of health, can do less testing, less regulation of the septic systems.
Do you have any comments on what, uh, insurance is?
Well, first off, the state department of health doesn't regulate wells in, in any way. We provide guidance and education to homeowners. DNR keeps water well records. Local health departments can regulate location and water quality from private wells if they have a local ordinance. They cannot regulate anything other than that, they cannot regulate construction. So I, I'm sorry, I don't know what statute you're talking about. I, I do wanna discuss, we have a rule, um, for onsite sewage systems, residential onsite sewage systems, that discusses five conventional types of systems. And then we have what we call Technologies Need Indiana, which are technologies that have been presented to us along with our testing, and our office reviews and approves those, and now we have a technical review panel that assists with that. And, are you, Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Levin is correct that any of those technologies can be used anywhere, but there's a big caveat to that. You have to have the space and you have to have suitable soils to use whatever type of system you want. So there, there's, as far as onsite sewage systems go, there is a septic tank and a soil absorption field, you have to have both. There's a holding tank, and that rule only became effective in twenty twenty-three as far as permanent holding tanks. So it hasn't been around long, but yes, it can be used for new construction. And then you can have a sanitary valve privy. If you have plumbing in your home, you have to have one of the other options as well. So, uh, the big thing is, is the room, the space on the property to put the system and suitable soils in which the system can work.
Do those, uh, do those requirements apply differently to new construction versus existing homes?
No, they, they apply consistently for new, new construction, repair, replacement, except when a repair or replacement cannot meet the requirements of the rule. So if you have limited space, or you're not meeting a separation distance, or you can't get your drainage quite deep enough, the local health department ha- does have the option of utilizing best judgment. But it still has to be one of those systems. They, they cannot allow discharging. They can allow reduced sizing, uh, reduced separation distances. We discussed well separation distances, and that is not excluded from best judgment. However, it is a big concern. Um, because, especially in your sandier soils here, nitrates and pharmaceuticals, I mean, we're not just talking E. coli moving in the ground. It's a whole lot of other things. So, um, you know, E. coli counts are one thing, but, um, there's a lot of other contaminants in, in wastewater.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad that you guys came and brought that up because in the, the probably twenty hours of sewer board meetings that I've listened to, uh, this year, that's the first I've heard of this, so.
Best judgment?
You know, the, uh, the nitrates and the, uh, and the, and the pharmaceuticals, so thank you for bringing that information.
If I can make a comment too about that. This changes from a state happened after the sewer board was created with what was allowed. Cause our, our sewer board was created in twenty twenty-two, correct? Instead it changed to add, modified twenty twenty-three with new laws and?
That was the holding tank, the permanent holding tank. And essentially, all you have to have is room for the holding tank and separation distances. It's not required a sewage. But if you're talking a holding tank versus a two hundred and eight dollar a month sewer bill, check the cost of pumping a one thousand gallon tank, and you're gonna do it probably once a week. And I live in, in Marshall County, but I live in a county in northern Indiana that might pay three hundred dollars every time my tank is pumped. So if you have to do that, I'm gonna say even conservatively, every other week, that's gonna be at least six hundred dollars a month. So we, we understand that sewage holding tanks are a possibility, we allow them, we do not prohibit them, but we certainly talk to homeowners about the continued cost because once you're dealing with a holding tank and you have no option for connection to sewer or putting in a septic tank and soil absorption field, you're stuck with it. And if you can't afford, the homeowner can't afford to have their tank pumped, then they're not gonna be able to live in the house.
Can you, uh, can you dig up? And that's unfortunate for people.
Yes, it is.
Um, something that doesn't work.
And that's why we try to educate those homeowners very well before we issue those permits, yeah.
Because it's not right to have them overpaying for their, uh, costs either.
Right.
And that's what kinda happens here. Is it legal to have your system bed up everything, and you may install it when you have an existing house?
It could be done under best judgment. It is certainly not the optimum, or even, you know, something that I really consider. You have to be in a really, really bad position in order to, um, uh, dig up the system and put a new system back in there.
What does the state say about it? Is it, is the state okay with it? I mean, I mean, as a, as a person, we may not think it's optimal. So we were looking at costing people twenty-five million dollars, and my system's okay, I'd be like.
Right, and, and I completely understand your situation. First off, the best judgment call is the local health department's call, not the state department of health. We can advise them, we can give our opinions, but we cannot make that decision. It is a local health department's call. The thing that you need to understand when digging up a failed system, a system failed for a reason. And typically, it's a soil reason. So if we're digging that out and finding on using the same soil underneath it, it typically doesn't work out well.
When you replace the soil, correct?
You can't put a system in fill soil. You cannot put, just, you can't dig, you know, down five feet and refill it with soil. You'd have to use indot spec to make it be sand. And you still have to be able to, um, have adequate vertical separation distance to treat the wastewater before it hits any kind of limiting layer.
No, I, I have another question for you. Are local county health departments allowed to be more stringent on what they allow for septic or what the state allows?
They cannot be more stringent except those that have had a local ordinance passed through the technical review panel in twenty twenty-four. So we, um, twenty-three counties in total have had local ordinances that are more stringent than the code pass through the technical review panel. Unfortunately, seven of those were passed in twenty twenty-five, and they are now null and void again. So we have sixteen that were passed in twenty twenty-four that the technical review panel has allowed certain possessions for them to be more stringent than the state rule.
Is, is that a request that comes from a county's board of commissioners? Or is that a direct request, separate from the health department?
The requirement is, um, usually the health department is involved in, in developing the ordinance. But the ru- rule requires, or the statute requires that the county commissioners approve that local ordinance before it goes to the technical review panel, but it cannot be enforced until the technical review panel has given their approval.
Sir, can I, can I follow up on that real quick? Obviously, I was not in every commissioner's meeting for the last couple of years. Do we have one of those ordinances back? No, okay.
Aren't, aren't the regulations as far as, um, in, like, our planning commission, a certain amount, to even put a septic system in unless you have a variance? Aren't the regulations of, of what size the property has to be?
Not unless you have a local ordinance that requires a certain acreage. And that law that was passed is effective to any county, city, or town ordinance that has anything to do with residential onsite sewage systems. So if you're building, your zoning department has a requirement for X amount of acres for an onsite sewage system to be installed, that became null and void as well. That portion of that ordinance, because it's more stringent than the state rule.
Hi, I'm Faith, I'm with the health department. And the, uh, ordinance, our new ordinance was passed in December sixteenth of twenty twenty-four. And in this ordinance, yes, you have to have at least an acre lot.
But that is a TRP approval.
Yes, it does.
Our standard is even greater than that, but.
No, it's just one acre.
Sure. And so, so, so if that's a forty foot lot, would that, that's a variance in order to put a septic? Or would they not be available to do that? Could there, I mean, be a new build in a forty foot lot on the, or sixty foot lot on the lake? Would that ever be allowed or?
Well, it, there's, due to the, uh, eight, the, I think it was like nineteen eighty-two or something with the planning commission?
Planning commission.
Yeah, anything, um, after that doesn't have to follow.
Okay.
That eight, one acre rule.
I checked with the department of health, uh, on Monday, the Indiana Department of Health, and that ordinance was not approved by the technical review committee, so that's not valid. That's from the department of health, that, that state department of health, that there is no, there is nothing that's been passed that, that's allowed them to move.
The technical.
They usually, but they haven't.
Hold on, hold on. Nick, Nick, do you, this is Nick Ricker, he's our planning director, do you have any knowledge of that?
Uh, we require one acre for new, for new lots.
New lots?
In Lake, Lake District, like what district? The homes that are there currently, we don't have any restrictions on whether or not they can replace their septic.
The question is.
That would be up to the health.
Was it approved by the state technical regimen? Because under Indiana law, the county cannot pass a rural ordinance that is more stringent than the state statute or the state code.
Yes.
Unless it's been approved by the Indiana technical ordinance committee. And I, I checked with them on Monday, and they said Marshall County does not have one. The representative from the Indiana Department of Health also said that Marshall County is not one of the counties that has one. Meaning the one acre requirement is not legal.
Okay.
So is that true?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. It's not good, the health department doesn't know what rules are supposed to enforce and not enforce. But I'm a homeowner, and I'm probably building a septic or a lot, and I'm being pulled on being an acre, but that's not actually the law. That's not good at all.
And this is, this is why we're having this conversation today because I've heard over and over again from members of the public that standards that are not legal are being enforced on them, and we need to get to the bottom of that. Please, please, hey, please, please.
Let's think the destruction feels, Marcel, I was on the board when we passed that, and we knew these state guidelines is all we did, my recollection. Because the state, I mean, wiped all the ordinances out, and we renewed them, and we, we did not go stricter than the state. We knew their guidelines, what their suggestions were.
Yeah.
So I believe what you're saying would be correct.
Marcel, would you be willing to look into that and then give us a definitive answer at our, at our next meeting? I appreciate that.
Okay. So Doc, or, I'm sorry, what did you name again?
Alice, Alice Quinn, Alice.
Uh, is there anything else you'd like to add to the conversation? Cause I'll move on to someone else, and I appreciate you coming up so much.
Thank you.
Can I just say something? Absolutely, absolutely.
Doc, you said we, to, to the Marshall County Health Department's knowledge, fifty, uh, dry well systems, we didn't know of how many, uh, failing systems are out there unrelated to that.
I think, uh, Faith, up to our things, Faith can give us that information. Marcel, we can get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
What?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, um, a distance between a septic and a water well? What, what, what is your requirement to that? Is there a requirement for that?
For residential, for residential drinking water well, it's fifty feet um, as long as we don't have coarse sand and gravel, in which case we double that to one hundred. Public wells, it's two hundred.
Public well?
I'm sorry, a commercial well is one hundred, and public drinking water sources are two hundred.
And is, is that, can be, that in depth or distance?
That's a horizontal separation.
And then is there a restriction of how deep it has to be, the well?
No.
Okay, alright.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, I was told that, um, we used to, as Marshall County, we offered that, um, if somebody wanted their septic tested and checked, that Marshall County or Health Department would come out and would inspect that. Um, I've also heard that recently, um, that our environmental specialist said that she's too busy, and that they're being told that they have to choose from three people, contractors, that they can, that they have to contact, and that the contractors, that individual, the property owner, has to pay out of their pocket. Can you clarify that for me? What is our standard? What are we doing in Marshall County? Is our environmental specialist checking, checking septic? Or is, are they, are property owners need to hire off of three individuals that they are approved, and they have to pay out of pocket?
I think it just kinda depends on if they want a total inspection, locations and all that stuff, are there septic systems? We don't do that, okay? Uh, where is the, um, field, where is the septic tank and all that stuff? That's done by, uh, we have to hire somebody, or they have to hire somebody to do that.
Okay.
If, um, from the standpoint of how do you test it, yeah, I mean, we can die test.
Okay.
We put some stuff, it'll go out, and we, we can do that, but you have to request this.
And we offer that for free to our, to our property owners? We'll do that.
Have we done that, Doc, recently, changing homes around the lake or anything of that nature?
No, we haven't yet.
So if you.
We, we have to be requested.
You have to do research for us. Okay, okay.
Okay, Jim had a question. With the water results that we've been testing locally in Marshall County, we are known for high arsenic now. St. Joe County is and Marshall County is, and a lot of people aren't even aware of that. So the nitrate.
There's a lot of that in Indiana.
The nutrients, the new chlorine bacteria and copper and all of that stuff. And then, you know, then we're calling on the people to get in our system for that drinking water. But they've, they've changed what, what they rate as high. Um, a few years ago, what was acceptable then was not acceptable now. So if you're testing your drinking water and arsenic comes up, don't be surprised because it's pretty prevalent in Marshall County.
Yeah, I start to wonder, Jim, um, why we're looking at a sewer system, not a drinking water system. I'm wondering why.
Can I add a, a comment about the inspection process? We, as the state department of health, don't encourage local health departments to take on inspection of systems other than construction inspections when they're first installed. First off, it brings on um a huge liability on the county because typically our local health department staff, they don't have a pump or truck. They can't pump the septic tank. A lot of times they don't have the proper equipment to do all of that inspection. So yes, it is on the homeowner, if they want their system inspected, to hire someone to do that. I don't know about the list of three, but we just don't recommend that local health departments do that. They can provide the documentation that they have on file, they can provide guidance. But, you know, to go out there and do that themselves, and a lot of times they are just too busy to take on that additional um task.
Right, I can tell you with the list of three, there's a statute that says that any um septic installer that's certified in the state of Indiana by any county can, can work in any other county. They might have to pay a local fee to the local health department that they're working in. But if they're certified by La Porte County, St. Joe County, Elkhart County, Casasaw County, Stark County, they can work in Marshall County.
But if, if Marshall County does not have an ordinance requiring registration, then it doesn't matter. They can work there anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, let's uh get a couple of our comments and then we'll move on. Uh, Commissioner Rohan had a request also, but can you guys uh comment quickly? Okay, do you have comments?
Okay.
I just was gonna ask if, you know, if you have a failing system now and whether or not there's a, a sewer coming through, what is your solution for a small lot if somebody's living in a house and they have no septic? Is it just putting a tank in and doing pump and haul? Or can they put in a system in these small lots that will work? Where they don't need a sewer board? And my concern is that we have fifty to a hundred failing systems, people that can't live in their houses. No matter if this comes five years from now to you from now, or it doesn't come at all, what do we do to help those people? What's, what's a system that would work for a small lake lot?
Obviously, we consider a holding tank, but it's kind of a loaded question. You say small lot, I don't know how small, I don't know what kind of soils we have, if we do meet separation distances. There's a whole lot that goes into that, but we would certainly work with any homeowner to try to get some type of system in there. I mean, as has been alluded to, we have lots of technologies now. And some of them have smaller footprints, so.
And I, I think that's all people are asking for.
Options.
Yeah, it's just for somebody to work with them.
It, it, that's gonna be a lengthy process and I have no problem with that. I just want you to understand that we have to start, abate have to start somewhere. And I just don't want the people where they start to feel like they're being picked on because they're going first. You can't do all of the, all of the properties in all of your uh areas at once. It's just not possible. So, but once, once a failure is found, then the local health department is obligated to require abatement of that.
One more, one more comment, some comment, then we have to move on. Any other question?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, and I'm, I'm gonna ask this question because I've had homeowners in different parts of the county mention that it's happened to them. Who wins? Say a homeowner gives a septic inspection, it fails. They get another company, a contractor come in, they test it, it passes. Where does that fall out as far as? Who wins in that?
We have a very clear definition of failure in the rule. It consists of three things. Contamination of portable groundwater, backup in the home, problems with the home plumbing, or uh where we have sewage come to the surface of the ground or into groundwaterers and contamination. Um, if it does not meet one of those criteria, then um it's not technically in failure. It can be a malfunction, but it doesn't necessarily be in failure. So that's also a kind of a loaded question because um it depends on, is the house occupied when this inspector does it versus unoccupied when this inspector does it? Is there a stress test on, which we don't recommend? And if there's a stress test on, how many, how much water was already used in the system that day? If someone's calling it over for a septic tank of failure, that's incorrect. I mean, it has to meet one of those three definitions.
Cause I, I'm, I'm sure somewhere in the state, there's somebody out there that pays to play and you can pass anything you want to.
Yes, I've trained many inspectors and that is a problem, uh, very much a problem. And we pretty much know who does it, but um yeah, a lot of times the state will get involved and come out with a system or the local health department can do that. But I've always encouraged inspectors not to make that determination, whether it's failure or not, unless they actually see it, but leave that up to the local health department. Because if it's a malfunction, the local health department can still take action to have that malfunction corrected.
Oh, okay, maybe I misunderstood the process. So basically, they do the inspection, give it to the health department, the health department makes a determination?
It's not required to give it to the local health department, okay? So, yeah, we encourage our inspectors to do that because if they're unsure, if they have this, this, and this wrong, but it doesn't meet the definition of failure, work with your local health department, have them make that final decision.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Good, good information, yeah.
Jim, Jim's gonna make a quick comment.
I'm making a quick comment. Adam, I've seen what has happened. Some people are not really honest and have worked on a system and I know this failed and it's near failure and they had it pumped way before the inspector comes. And then later, there's an issue with it and that inspector said that it was fine, but the reality was they had it freshly pumped and nobody knew the difference. So there are people that are dishonest, sorry to say.
If you live in a county long enough, you hear all kinds of stories.
On my part at all.
Okay, so there was um someone on the aisle to my left, just a little bit, had a hand up. You can go ahead and speak and Mr. Bohan would like uh perhaps someone from AK Industries or Sledgehammer to speak next. I mean, we may take a recess, okay? So come on up. Just state your name and uh please, please sign in, sign in, thank you.
My name is uh Ikki Marcus Indito and I live on Mill Pond Trail in Plymouth, Indiana. I guess I'm here trying to um gather my thoughts and words, what I wanna say, but I'm really confused by this whole thing. And I think I fall into a lot of the categories that have, you've talked about. I have a small lot, I have a sixty-foot lot, I live on the lake. When I moved into my home in ninety-six, we had a five-hundred gallon tank. We knew it was a problem, we had it replaced. We spent like eight thousand dollars to replace the system. They put in a fifteen-hundred gallon septic, two fifteen-hundred gallon drywells, six tons of stone around the system. And we built up, uh, I don't know what you call that, but like. Yes, Yamam system. We have never, we've always maintained this system. It probably is twenty years old or more, because I don't know exactly after we moved in when we did it. But I don't think my system has failed. However, I had meth heads moving next door to me and their system, they ran over it with something and it, it broke their septic. So it leached into my yard. So I called the health department and I do wanna say that the first thing out of the person at the health department's mouth was, isn't every septic system on Mill Pond Trail leaking? First words.
Mine isn't.
Exactly what I said. So I feel like right there, I felt like, you know, am I gonna get the truth? I mean, what's gonna happen here? Any event, this house is, this septic is condemned, he's given a loan to put in a pump and dump or whatever you guys call that. And he spends it on a car and nothing ever happens. The lot, the house is gone now, somebody's dead, it's great, they're gone, okay? Here I am now, in a situation where, I don't know. I mean, I've heard I can put, I can add an aerobic drip system to the system I already have. I can take the system out, I can not take the system out. I have to pay to break the, the uh wells that are in there. I think everyone that's involved in this is so damn confused that they don't know whether their heads up or heads down.
And that's, and that's why we're having this meeting tonight is because we're trying to get everybody at the table to be able to cut down to what's really true.
Okay, well, and I appreciate that. And I do wanna say that uh I had a little um issue, not an issue with Mr. Shattuck, we had some words. I appreciate the fact that everybody's being considerate of one another. And none of us are in this position because we wanna be here, we just are, the rules have changed along the way. So let's just try and work together and get it resolved.
Thank you.
Really, really, are, are you still having ongoing issues with your neighbors?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So uh, is there anyone from AK Industries or Sledgehammer here that would like to talk? There was a neat presentation given on the sewer district, at the sewer district meeting. Um, I was told that perhaps he might be here, might wanna talk.
He's on the right here.
There you go. State your name and uh who are you with?
Sure, I'm Steve Davos, I'm with AK Industries. And our product marine hydration, or we also have Sledgehammer. Can you sign in, please? Sure, thank you. So our systems are NSF forty-two, four-five systems. They're alternative systems for sewer se- or sewer septic, but mostly septic replacement. Our systems are approved by Indiana Health Department and as Alice said, there are restraints. Field size reductions, one of our biggest. Our biggest proponents, basically, we can put a system in, qualify for a field size reduction. It only goes to a certain percentage. And it does depend on the rules of the state. But these are systems that treat the wastewater for the nitrates, for those phosphates, E. coli, fecal cholera form with additional treatment. And our system uh pretty much replaces the septic. In other states, we've direct discharge, no, that's not allowed in Indiana to direct discharge or surface discharge. But we've used UV chlorination to disinfect and be able to do that. Um, so we're neither for or against, uh, but at the same time, we're just offering an alternative that uh homeowners can choose to do, uh, which has been in Indiana for many years. And a lot of other states, uh, our largest states are uh Texas and Illinois, Ohio. We're getting into Newark. If you've heard about uh the Maryland uh Bay Restoration Fund? Uh, Maryland's uh has a high nitrate problem in the waterways and we've been able to take one of our systems and reduce those nitrates uh in, in the watershed, basically. Not just our system, obviously, there's other manufacturers. It's been a uh effort among others of reducing the amount of fertilizers from farmers and such. Uh, we're based here in Plymouth, Indiana. That's the biggest part and that's why I was asked by Bill to stop in and talk. Be glad to answer any questions that one might have.
If you can't discharge, what, where, where does it go?
Ours still needs a field, which would be a standard field, uh drain.
Okay, I mean, you can't use it for sprinkler system, not a word.
Okay, correct.
Can you tell me what states allow the discharge? Is Michigan, do, do they allow that, you know?
Mostly southern states allow surface discharge.
And a reason why?
We freeze in Indiana, uh, any kind of lines would freeze sprinklers such.
Okay.
That's the reason why surface discharge isn't allowed.
So how's that take different from the tanks that are installed today? And are you talking um leach fields that go with ours that's based upon bedrooms and sorts of things like we have here then?
Sure, we, so our systems are called aerobic systems. It's a different type of bacteria that's uh agitated. So we inject an oxygen using a diffuser system, which is kinda like what you'd see in a fish aquarium. We inject the oxygen into the wastewater. It grows aerobic bacteria, which are more aggressive, break down the waste quicker and more efficiently. Um, in our systems, they then also can reduce nitrates by recirculation, which is the, the way most manufacturers use that. We still require a field.
So basically, there is a, an ongoing cost then for the injections of these things?
So usually it's a electrical charge, uh, standard running a, a compressor, which is uh like a pond aeration pump.
Right.
Uh, we do have maintenance requirements, the state uh and as well as NSF requires maintenance to be performed on these by annually. Um, and you know, that is at the cost of the homeowner, but on a national average, it usually ends up being about three hundred dollars a year of, on an average.
And then an installation charge.
An installation, that would be up to install, there are certified installers throughout the state, uh.
So you sell the product, but they're all approved installers?
Correct, and they are trained in aerobic systems.
Yes.
Do you have an estimate of the leach field as well?
Um, they will install a leach field, so our portion of it, it, we don't start piping or the leach portion of that, just the treatment itself. Usually we live that up to the installers to quote. Um, our system together on a, on a standard home.
Three bedroom, I'd say.
Three bedroom, new construction, uh, more than likely about twenty-five thousand with the drain field, somewhere there.
About what a mountain system would be then.
Correct.
Okay.
Can you comment? I believe I heard you speak once before.
Sure.
You talk about the size of leach fields and, and reduce piping needed? Do I remember that correctly?
Sure, the state requires um, and it's a calculation uh perkenability of the soil and such for their linear feet of uh drain field. So the, the state also has a statute of, if it's an aerobic wastewater treatment and complies with NSF forty, then there's a field size reduction that's able to, and it's a thirty percent reduction. So if you needed a hundred linear feet, you're able to reduce that linear feet by that percentage.
I've got, I've got two quick questions that bill on each other here. So from the presentation at the sewer board meeting last week, I heard that um some of the systems that you guys sell um can be put together cooperatively? Let's say if you had three or four, five, six properties next to each other that didn't have sufficient space, that they can partner together on a single system? Is that accurate?
We have seen that in the past, um, where a, let's say a homeowners association wanted to designate property that was community property, say a park or off area, where all of theirs would be collected into a central uh treatment area. We would build those systems to comply with the amount. But that is a different approval than residential. That would have to go through the engineering department at the state, but it's perfectly uh allowable if approved by a state. It would have to be uh designed and pitched to their technical team there.
So then the follow-up on that is, how often do you guys run into situations where you say, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do for you?
Uh, it's very few and far between. Usually we're restricted by obviously the rules of the state. So uh as Alice had mentioned uh before, where the property may be too small, there's nothing we can do. Uh, we can treat as much as we can, but if it's bad soil or small enough property that it's too close to the well, ours will treat so much, but you just don't, we're restricted by the rule. We are sorry. And that, that would be up to the state. It's actually the state, she was saying that um, you know, that's a calculation basically of uh how much property they have or how big of a house they have according to, this is where the drain field is, is there enough property? And then that's a whole calculation that they do for linear feet of drain field. Our tank itself would fit in a six-foot by six-foot by about eight-foot hole, but the drain field is the largest portion of that. It means that dispersment, that's the, the completion of the treatment is like a filter, a sand filter.
Before it gets to the water tank.
Your estimate.
Just depends on the size too.
That's local health department, our health department would be approving those, I'm guessing. They're figuring out the, they'd be the ones calculating what would be needed.
Yes, we, we have systems in Marshall County, St. Joe County, Elkhart County already, yeah. And they're usually used where, where someone does have a limited field, uh, secondary field area, uh, where they had to go to a, a, a separate field and they need to be a certain distance from their well. This is all they had, they needed that thirty percent reduction in order to fit the system in. So they had to go advanced treatment, which is our.
Yeah, and so this, this might be a, a Nick and Marcel uh question as well. But so if you, if you're looking at the difference between um new construction and existing construction, are there gonna be many folks who maybe for new construction wouldn't qualify to put one of these in? But with, with their existing lot, would they be allowed to repair or replace with, with something like this?
So that goes back to the best judgment of the health department rule. So you can replace existing systems that do not meet the setback requirements, the lot requirements at the state if the health department says, you know, it, it's okay. You cannot do that with new construction. New construction, you would have to meet all, all of the requirements. You cannot do that with new construction, with new construction, you would have to meet all of the requirements.
Okay.
One other comment?
Yeah, yeah.
A common area for the leach field, I could understand how that would work out very well. But if you're doing a shared area with your neighbors, you better have something that we coordinated.
That's right.
Because you might get along with them extremely well. So you would, um, easement are a variance of record.
Yes.
And it kinda drags. And you don't have to move to a world with the property. Because if not, and you move in next door and you don't like me, then there was my leach field.
Yeah.
So yeah, most cluster systems, usually the county health department will require an easement be in place before they'll approve such a system.
In a perfect world, Marcel.
Those would be need to be maintained as well, that's why it usually, it needs to be a group, like a homeowners association, to coordinate the actual maintenance and service, because our systems need that service. So it's just like a dry well in the ground that's gonna sit there for thirty years and not be used, it would actually fail. Ours will as well, if it's not maintained.
How often, how often would you maintain that system? Would you recommend pumping that every several years?
So, on our system, usually they do a service solids test, and we say it's twenty to forty percent of solids in the tank. And on an average, I would see about a six-year pump, and you'd be pumping a septic tank more than that, or a retreat tank, yeah.
So I would like to take a recess now, immediately, if anyone else has any comments or questions or any other statements for Mr. Davis. Would it be acceptable for you guys to agree to take a recess? Okay. Is there any more comments before he leaves?
I'll just say thank you, I know you've been to multiple meetings on this subject in the last few months, and thank you for your assistance on bringing information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, how about we take a recess for ten minutes, come back, use the facilities and the. Thank you all, it's been a very spirited, but respectful discussion, I appreciate that. Obviously, we gave some deference to those who have a little bit more knowledge and will say expert testimony. I think what I'd like to do is just kinda alternate, fellow against, fellow against. We saw that the AK industry gentleman has solutions, he's needed fellow against, but if anyone who would like to speak, let's say, in support of the sewer district, or is there a sewer board member who'd like to take the seat there? Anyone who'd like to speak out in support of the sewer district?
We got one.
Mr. Chairman?
We got one.
Well, you're, you're, you're a lucky guy, come sit down.
I think what I'm gonna defer to is I'm gonna ask gentlemen from JBR.
Okay.
Don't mind.
That's fine.
Because you know as well as I know that if I X and O, I'll use up three minutes of this.
It's a father and son came here.
Okay, great. So, state your names for the record, and.
I'm Ken Jones Senior, and for those of you that were involved in formation of the district, I was probably point man with the district, and with the citizens, actually, moving the project forward. It wasn't enjoyable process, it wasn't without its bumps in the road, that's for sure. And I think overall, I think the county made the right decision to initiate the district and get it going. And it's good that you're here tonight, trying to learn more, learn as much as you can. And especially because it sounds like we might be, you know, kind of teetering on the edge of making some decisions, and this gives you a chance to really maybe think them through a little bit. So, one of the things I wanna do is clear up a little bit for you relative to the procurement of funding on a project like this. So, I know that you've heard the word grant over and over again. The program that we are targeting right now, that will be the primary funder for this project, at least for now, is the state revolving loan fund, and that's a branch in the Indiana Finance Authority, and it's a wastewater version of the state revolving loan fund. They don't process grants, what they process are loans. But those loans are quite creative, and there are some significant tasks that have to happen to qualify for certain types of subsidization under the program. But, one thing for sure, and I need to clear up right away, is there are no grants provided by that funding agency in advance of a project. And it doesn't happen that way. So, it is up to the local entity to move the project all the way through that process, take care of all that preparation, and then continue to move their project on the state's project priority list until it qualifies for subsidization. This year, for instance, in the state of Indiana, there were only eleven projects on that list of probably eighty projects across the state that qualified for subsidization. It's our hope that at some point in time, your project will get into that, that top of that list. We had three projects in that fundable range this year, in other communities, last year I think we hit four. Yours is not ready to get to that portion of the procurement process. Now, I feel like there hasn't been enough work done at this point in time, where if the district board decides to pump the brakes a little bit, and try to see if we can move this project up that list. It won't happen, probably next year. It may take another couple of years before it gets all the way to the top of the list, where we can count on subsidization. So, speaking of subsidization, here's how that works. First of all, it is not a grant, it's a forgivable loan. And right now, that forgivable loan typically tops out somewhere in the five million dollar range, maybe a little more, depending on what they're trying to help you accomplish. They also routinely provide zero interest loans, and those are usually fairly long-term. They provide a zero interest loan, a one-term loan, for portions of the project that we consider to be durable, that have a very long life, let's say, pipe in the ground, which, by the way, in this project, there's miles of pipe that would go in the ground. And that pipe will outlast us all probably by, you know, fifty years or so. So, the program says, well, we feel good noting on that asset, because it'll outlast the program easily. So, and then there is a fourth category, where we have products and assets that are built within the project that do have a shelf life. And usually, that usable life is in the twenty-year range. So typically, that means that portion of the project, we would typically get a low-interest loan for that project in the twenty-year term. So it's usually, in most fallacies, when we're dealing with the state revolving loan fund, it is a group of packages that are put together to help buy down the cost of the project to the consumer. And every project that we've done with the program, which have been many, probably, I don't know, in the three hundred or three hundred and fifty million dollar range in the last ten years, in aggregate, were funded in some way with that combination. So, one of the things that we are working with the district on right now, with the district board, is to, you know, trying to determine, you know, again, how much support is there for the project? If the project goes forward, how can we package the project up to take advantage of that particular program at the highest level? That could mean that the project doesn't get built in one phase. It could mean that the project can split in a couple of phases, maybe three, I don't know. But, that's our job, to kinda help them earn that. The other resource that is routinely accessed for these projects is the USDA's World Development Program. Project qualifies for that. Regrettably, the income demographic for the beneficiaries in this particular project won't qualify them for the lowest interest rate, but it'll still be below, like a bank rate, it'll still be maybe sub four point two or four point three. But that loan can be procured for forty years, so there's some advantages there, especially when you have a utility that's gonna last way over forty years. So there's some advantages there, especially when you have a utility that's going to last way over 40 years. So we made the conscious decision to target this project completely with the state of Indiana State Revolving Loan Fund program and not chase after USDA. But that could change. We could begin that application, the qualification process is almost exactly the same as it is with State Revolving Loan Fund. So we could put the project back into the USDA program at any point. So that is another dialogue that we'll have with the district. So a couple of things that we've learned about the community. And Jones, Jr., has been, you know, working with our staff sheet on the ground, face to face with citizens out there. And so I'm going to let him talk about that here in a second. But I'm going to maybe lay out a few things for you to think about and for the board to think about and for the community to think about before they make a decision to say, okay, we're done. And so we do have in the district in PSA 1, which is the only project that's active right now out of 13, 596 residents with 628 equivalent dwelling units. That means we have some homes or sewage producing structures that are going to account for more than one household's waste. We do know that over 80% of the homes in the service area, in this particular service area, and this is something that's discoverable through Marshall County GIS, that are under the minimum lot size for a septic system. And this again would be if you were building a new septic system. As we learned earlier, there's a good chance that health department would do everything they could do to help you replace that septic system if you had to. And that's certainly typical in most of the jurisdictions we work at. But that one constraint sometimes is enough for people to say, I think I would be okay with sewer if I can get it at an affordable rate. So only about 25, 27% of the soil of the land and the soil conditions in the land are suitable for septic systems for a typical installation. So the gentleman from AK Industries, when he's talking about, man, if we have good soils, you know, we can make a system work with a smaller footprint. In this case, we have very few sites. First of all, they're all small. A lot of them are small, most of them are small. But we also have poor soils and high water tables, as you know, it's in the lakeside community. One of the things that I always do is I kind of try to look at, especially when I'm talking to elected officials, administrative officials, to get an understanding of what the value of the project might be. My first look at was the value of the real estate. Right now, because it is a part of our community, we find that the total assessed value in that service area, PSA 1, is about, is a little over $157 million. And the reason I bring that up is because in every single case and every single project that I've worked on in my entire career, and I've been doing these projects for most of my career, we see, we do see home values, livability, quality of life, all of those things elevate when homeowners are no longer concerned about the sustainability of their lifestyle. And that is almost always wrapped around, what can I do with my septic system or my water well? And if I have a million dollar home and I don't have a septic system that works, then, you know, what do I have really? So we, just as an example, for your consideration, I'm not, I'm not here to sell you this any farther. I'm here to just give you information that you can use in your decision-making process. I know that what I have to say isn't going to change what you do or don't do. But I need to tell you that we did go back and look at a couple of projects that we're familiar with here in Marshall County. One is at Coons Lake. There's a portion of Coons Lake that tips over into Marshall County. And we sampled 10 homes there. We also sampled 10 homes in Stark County on the same lake. We built that sewer in 2010. And it was coming out of the, you know, the recession, of course. So we got the project done for a lot less money than we ever would today. But and then we also sampled Pretty Lake. And we're familiar with Pretty Lake. We've done some work for them in their system. And we know what year that went in. And so we look back and looked at the last sale value for each one of those homes and then compared that to the current assessed value. I mean, homes not for sale, so it's not listed. It's not been sold recently. But in the case of Coons Lake, for the homes in Marshall County, we saw a 74% increase in property value. And that was after the sewer went in. And although you may say, well, maybe that doesn't make a lot of difference. But I can tell you from my personal experience, for all of the 37 years I've been doing these projects, in every single case, we've seen home values elevate within a few years after the sewer was built. It could be 10, could be five, could be two, you know? At Coons Lake in Stark County, 86%. And at Pretty Lake, 135%. From the last sale value to the current assessed value for each one of those 30 properties. So I thought that was important to know. Because there is some added value to the homeowner, whether it be the homeowner that lives there now or the homeowner that lives there later. But there's also some added value to the jurisdiction as well. Right now, there's about 94,000 gallons of wastewater per day being discharged into the environment, treated as much as it can be treated by the septic systems that the homeowners are using and taking care of. And that is assuming the average home is generating about 210 gallons of wastewater a day. So that's, the way we compute that is 2.7 people or three people per home. And there could be homes out there that have quite a few more than that. But our estimate is 94,000 gallons a day. So it's good to know that your health department does have the ability to work with homeowners to repair septic systems. It's not necessarily true in every jurisdiction. And, you know, I've known faith for as long as I've been working on this project. And if there's anybody that's going to help somebody, it's going to be her. Absolutely. In all of the communities that we've worked in, every single one of them, the reinvestment and remodeling of home sites after the sewer goes in, becomes active, usually within the first 365 days. We just finished this spring, actually, within the last couple of months, building a complete sewer around Tepica Moon Lake and Chaplin Lakes in Casasco County. And what I'm hearing from our inspection staff that are down there helping people get hooked up is that the home construction remodeling is already started in earnest and it's almost everywhere and every corner of the service area. And those homeowners were probably just waiting until that happened before they started making that investment. So the last thing I would say is more of a kind of a Ken's acting like a salesman person when it comes to public utilities, because I do feel that way sometimes. And but, you know, the need to modernize wastewater systems is not new to, you know, to modern men. As a matter of fact, most small communities had did it 50 years ago. You know, think of the small communities here that exist in town like Brumman, Bourbon, otherwise, where they said 50 years ago, what they had was a, they didn't have anything that was workable and they were just sending all the wastewater right to the local ditch. And so it's not new for jurisdiction authorities to look at projects and say, probably time to modernize. So this project is all about that. If you decide, or if the board decides with your blessing to go forward, that's really what you're going to accomplish. Relative to the cost of the project and the individual cost of the homes, I would say that the $75 to $85 a month number was something that we believed at the time that we put that in our presentation. And it changed very quickly after that. And the reason for that is, that was 2022. 2022 showed the world what real inflation looks like in the United States. Probably the only thing that came close to it was what is the same thing that happened in 1881. In the construction trades, the heavy construction trades, the impact was even more severe than what you would ever see at the grocery store. I would say that the average in that period of time, in that one single year, was somewhere in the 26% range. Effective wages, fuel, pieces and parts, availability of parts, all of those things that go along with building a sewer system. So we started at that point in time, when we started seeing that happen, to start updating our numbers. And that's why we're there today. And I know that doesn't feel good, but that's the truth of it. So and we're probably going to continue to update our numbers as we go forward until the project either stops or goes forward to bidding. And we feel like we're going to have to. Right now, we're fighting with, we're still fighting with some leftovers of the first Trump administration, Buy America, Build America. All of those parts and pieces now for all of those equipment has to come, has to be certified by the lender, in this case, State Revolving Loan Fund or USDA, before it can go into a project. Or we have to find a product that is usually a lot more expensive that's made here in the US. So that's part of it too. So that's stuff that we work with every day. So we have some ideas that we're going to share with the board. If they decide that they, and with, you know, with your input, if they decide that the project is going to be permanently stopped, then, you know, the work that we've completed has a pretty significant shelf life. So they could come back to it. Most of that is all of the preliminary survey work, all of the work that Ken, Jr., is doing with the property owners. He's out there, every day, meeting with them, trying to see how things are going to fit on their property. And we have others that are doing that very same thing. And then, of course, we are advancing the project through the design process. But it's not too late to stop. We're only about halfway there. So we can stop if we're asked to. And it can be picked up later if it needs to be. Of course, you know, our first reaction is, don't stop. You've got a project. We think we can get it funded. We may have to package it a little bit differently, and that's the last thing I'm going to talk to you about. You know, breaking it down into phases is not impossible and it's not unheard of, and we've done it before. And as a matter of fact, we're doing it right now in the Port County at Hudson and Sauvignon Lake, where the project in its entirety is estimated at about $43 million. And that does not fit completely within the SRF kind of level of comfort project where a really effective subsidization will impact the rate. So what we're doing right now is, as a matter of fact, we're going under construction with Phase 1 this year. We probably will go under construction with Phase 2 towards the end of this year. And then probably two more phases in that project before it's finally done. And the goal there is to continue the dialogue for purpose and need with the state, with the property owners, with the health department, and be able to. That is because of the, you know, kind of conflict that's going on right now, the project did drop down the project priority list a significant amount. It went from like 23 to 42.
41 or 43.
41 or so. And the reason they do that is not because they don't like the project. They are concentrating on helping projects get done. And they want everyone to be on the same page if possible. The last thing they want to do is advance a project where there's conflict that could stop the project at any point. And so they're going to say, we're going to move you down the list. If you get this, if you get this conflict resolved, we'll move you back up. It might take us a couple of years to get back our standing, but the fact of the matter is that is what's happened. And I believe that they value this project as much as I think we will someday when it's done, if you go forward. So that's my sales pitch.
I have a question. So many questions. Can I get one of you first? Okay, so I know that they do not have, the sewer district did not get a bond. They got a ban, which is a bond anticipation note. What are the terms of that ban? Because you're saying that it could be two, three, four years before funding can get in place. But what does that ban look like? Because according to what I understand, a ban is, you have to get a bond. You have to bond out. And if not, you're stuck at that lender, Star Bank, interest rate, correct?
So the bond anticipation note is customary. And the reason why is, especially with a brand new utility, a brand new governmental entity, they have no, they have no resources. And, you know, so it is very customary to go to a local bank. Usually, that bank is selected through a competition. You know, we usually ask, we go out and ask to your firm for your best deal. And that bond anticipation note, as far as I know for yours, is due in '27.
Okay, so there's, we have like a few short years.
Yep.
Okay, so then can you tell me, it's a recourse loan or a non-crease recourse note?
Basically, what it is, is right now, it's interest only and it's probably paying its own interest. That's customary too. But they are, and so at some point in time, that bank, that bond anticipation note info has to be paid.
Right.
And that is usually from proceeds from final funding.
Okay, but we have until 2027 where a bond has to be taken out. So that means we have until 2027 to get funding lined up.
Yes. The other thing that's pretty customary, and although it doesn't need to happen often, is that that bank, those banks will usually say, we'll give you a little bit more time. We just did that in, we just did that in White Pigeon, Michigan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So my question is, the board has said on multiple occasions, both that this project is going forward no matter what. And they've also said, if this project doesn't get down to a reasonable rate for the ratepayers, that it won't go forward.
Right.
So how is that consistent with the fact that we have to pay off $3.2 or $3 million in 2027?
Well, I think that's going to be up to the board as to how they advance the project from here forward. You know, understanding that there is a cloud over the project right now, I think they need to make a decision as to how much work are we going to continue to do? And we have, in my opinion, although I would like to see the project go forward as fast as it can, we have, in my opinion, enough to continue to advance the project. What would happen in that scenario, advance the project through the funding process is what I meant by that. What would happen in that scenario though, is that if we move through the process and we climb the list and get into the fundable range, then we're under a hard deadline. And we have to get the design done and get it out to bids and get it ready for construction. And usually, that is a very short window. That's one of the reasons why in every one of these projects, you see a lot of advanced work get done before you finally get from the lender, in this case, the State Revolving Loan Fund, what the terms are going to look like. And but understanding that there's, you know, there's a lot of significant dialogue going on here locally, that conversation with SRF is already going.
So what kind of a risk do we put the property owners in PSA 1 at if the plan is to expend the entire $3.2 million pre-construction budget before we know what financing looks like?
That's really going to be up to the district board. I wouldn't have any reason.
I have a question. I guess comparatively speaking, for other projects and other districts that you work with, are we in line with the project that they, comparatively speaking, are we in line with the projects that have been completed before?
Yes.
Okay. The expenditures that we have, are there any things that you feel like have been graceful or?
No.
Okay.
No, not a bit.
So Coontz, you mean several lakes, Coontz Lake, Pootie Lake, Chapman. You, you're working on a lake up in the Port County, I didn't catch, it wasn't a pond.
Saucony.
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 Is it, is it those receive grants, or? That's a, that's a game changer.
Yeah, again.
With, with Igo, one of the things that the director, the director asked me, and was kind of shocked that they had no record that we, that Russia kind of the Sewer Board never went for a startup, even a small startup, man. I'm not talking suing for the funds and giving them $15.7 million or whatever, but a few hundred thousand or funds for initial startup cost. And from what you're saying, it seems like you're talking all loans, which you've been like, seeing that there's very, variables to it. I mean, a lot of these still pay interest over time, it benefits the outcome. But did any of these lakes, that you guys have grants?
All of them.
All of them.
But again, grant is not the right word. Well, I take that back. Yeah, well, I take that back. So, we, we were activating this project. We were basically closing on the project at Tepi Canoe, Chapman Lakes. And that project got a forgivable loan from the State Involved in Loan Fund for $5 million, and a right, straight-out grant from USDA at somewhere between 12 and a half and, and 13 million.
Is that guaranteed? Is that guaranteed for the project?
No. No, there's no guarantees.
People took the risk and seen the high payments.
We had, we had the project, at that point in time, was, geez, it was probably three or four months away from going to bid, when we learned what all of the fin, what the funding model looked like. Ken, talk about bids. I believe I read a while back that Bremen had an estimate of $14 million, $15 for wastewater. And then the bid came in at 20 million. What do you, what do you do if the bid comes in much higher, you know? Well, that's a, that's, that is really a tough question. I mean, we, so like in that scenario there, we bid the project the first time around, got no bidders. Second time around, got one bidder. The project didn't go forward. The project didn't go forward, no. It's going forward now in smaller phases.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got some questions if I could. I got several actually. Are you doing any work in Bremen right now with the Canoe Woods?
Yes.
Okay, is that, are you connecting to the city of Bremen Sewer Line?
Yes.
Is that because it failed, or what is that reason? So just for the today.
They, they have a lagoon system as part of their original project. And the cost of rebuilding the lagoon, or changing it to a mechanical treatment plant, outpaced the cost of then entering into a regional agreement with Bremen.
So, that sewer was put in 25 years ago.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to get a little bit of a clue.
Somewhere in there, but then it had significantly, but you would be redoing that project today if that were, if we were setting 30 years ago, we'd be doing this again to make that trickle plan.
See, so, so that system, the, the collection system is in great shape. There's nothing wrong with the collection system. They've taken good care of it. The wastewater facility was built at the time, they used a lagoon treatment facility. It's basically what they call a facultative or stabilization lagoon, where it has no moving parts. And it depends on, basically, nature to do its job of treatment. And then, they, they wait till the weather's correct and their, their effluent reaches a certain limit before they can discharge it. The problem with, with lagoons, actually, if I had my choice, we'd, we'd all be using lagoons, because they have no moving parts and they're very inexpensive to operate. But to replace, they're very expensive. So, in that case, they would have to buy land to duplicate the, their complex that they currently have, and build a new system and then take their own system out. And to build the new system and line it appropriately is a lot more expensive today than it was 25 or 30 years ago.
So we also just permitted the first lagoon-style treatment plant in the state of Indiana in over 30 years down in Tepi Canoe County. That project went to bid, came in over budget, and now they're trying to find another way to accomplish that goal. So, that, that challenge has existed.
I'm, I'm trying to piece this together, because there's 13 different areas, and some might connect to Plymouth, someone have to connect to Bremen, or there's lagoons, or how... You know, this was 30, 30 years ago, are we going to be doing this again in 30 years? Or how would you look at that, if this would happen?
Well, the, the typical life span for a collection system is pretty significant. I would say that there are, most of the existing collection system in Bremen is probably in excess of 50 years old, probably 60 or 70 even. And it's still in good shape.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, so now, in the system that's being proposed at, at the group of lakes south of the city of Plymouth there in PSA One, that uses a different kind of a collection system, that's a pressure sewer. And so there are pieces of that that have shelf life. But we include that and incorporate that into the cost of operation.
And into all the preliminary rate analysis and everything.
Yeah.
Okay. I got two more questions, I promise. But, that, you were talking about the rate going from 85 a month to 2.05 because of inflation. That 2.05 number, we could probably expect that inflation is still occurring. Is that going to be double that if this would occur in three years?
We should, we need to clarify that.
Because if we're looking, you know, $100 to $200 now, are we looking in two years going to $400 a month? Which is going to drive out a majority of the people from the lake, because this is not a rich community, these are just regular people.
Yeah. The, so, the way that, the way the, the fiscal advisor put his report together, I don't necessarily understand all the beauty that he does, but one of the things that we're trying to demonstrate always to the funding agency, what's the worst-case scenario? What's the best-case scenario? And we want to get to the best-case scenario, and the only way we can get to the best-case scenario is to get your help. And so that's part of the reason why they do it that way. I, and there's, and there's, there's a reason why we don't do fiscal advisory services. We give that to a specialist.
Does the cost change strictly due to inflation?
Between, between the 75, 85, and the, the report that was filed with SRF later in 2022, that was due to inflation. And, and the 75, 85 was coming out of the previous study, probably shouldn't have been presented. But it was.
So, and it didn't go from 75 and 85 to 200, it went from 75 and 85 to 200 at the worst, and I think it was like 90, 95, 90, 90 bucks at the best, to 95.
So it's somewhere in between.
And then, my, my other kind of go with that, with the 74% increase in value, the way property taxes and everything, so we would be looking at a huge increase to the county, which one might think is great, but I look at that as being a high negative. I do not want to tax people more. We are fiscally conservative bodies, and if your house goes up, we're going to drive people out. And you have grandma who's been living here for 60 years, now can't afford to live here because of property taxes went up. And I do not want people to live their house.
180 is a natural number, when you, if you go up, like you said, 74% in property value.
It'll triple your property tax liability.
Yeah.
My, my last question, I promise I'll be quiet, but I'm, I feel like you've been pretty honest with us tonight. I just, I want to ask, are you being paid to be here tonight?
I'm not charging anybody to be here.
I just wanted to ask. Mr. President.
Let's stay, let's stay and jump in, Jesse.
Ken, if I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're 85 and 95 when we first started talking years ago. That was based on, if I remember right, a $23 million project, but $16 million is based on grant?
Yeah.
Okay, if I remember right.
Yeah, there was, there was, again, we don't, we kind of try to leave the fiscal advisory up to the fiscal advisor. And typically, the, the dialogue between the district and the lender is always through, yeah, or through that.
Yeah, okay.
And so, we provide the information that, that we provide, they use it how they feel it's best used. And of course, in some cases, they'll want to, you know, but almost always, they adjust up from our numbers. So, and then, and then through the entire process, this is very true for every project, it is a matter of, okay, when was the last time you looked at the project estimate? Let's go back and look at it again. And we have to keep adjusting it in most cases, especially in the world we're living in today.
So, you can answer my next question with Tepi Lake, I'm just finishing up. And I know people on Tepi Lake, on 300 on the west side, there's 88 bucks. They just hooked up last fall.
Yeah.
Late fall. So, did we have that much fruition between then and now, or was it just a glance of no difference?
It was the grant.
Okay, I sort of figured.
And, so, so one of the things that happened with the USDA, at the time that we received a grant for Tepi Canoe Lake, they basically told us the next day, enjoy that, because you probably won't see it again. And that's held true.
And that's part of another point, when you comment about the turmoil in the county why they don't want to do it. I'm totally a little bit, you know, of a negative situation, they're not going to do it. Okay, it's not going to happen. So, we're, we're just spending money for something that's not going to happen, more than likely, at least, at least for the next couple of years. My next, my last question to you is, I won't be like real and asking...
You did.
My last question is, how much money, the money we have to spend if this project doesn't come to fruition for a few more years? I mean, we're, we're in the 1.3 million now in the negative. There's somebody's going to make that back up. And, and to add more to debt to that, not knowing it's going to happen, we've got no places for that money. We're telling people no right now, not, we're, we're the nonprofits, because we're telling them no, because we don't have the money, and they're going to waste money like this.
Yeah, I, and, and I'll be honest with you, Stan, I'm not the decision maker.
Sure, I understand that.
I mean, I've run a contract with them. And I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to do is answer the questions the best I can.
Sure.
And try to be as positive as I can. I think it's, I'll be honest with you, I think it's a great project. If there's some way we can get it done, we should do it. Because you're not necessarily ever going to see the prices that you're seeing today again.
Okay, Jesse wants to jump in.
I'll, I'll hand off to you after I've finished. First of all, I want to thank you guys for coming tonight.
Sure.
I think that in the last three hours or so, we've gotten better answers than the public has gotten since January 1st. And so thank you guys for, like, really getting us some, some information that people can work with.
Yeah, that, one thing I want to, one thing I want to say is that, I can't speak independently of my client.
Right.
But they have assigned this project to us, and anything that, I mean, there isn't anything within this project that is protected information relative to. There's nothing that, that we can, would be restricted from answering. It, it doesn't work that way.
Some public, no idea.
It's a public project.
Yeah.
So, you know, if somebody calls our office and says, I want to know how to answer this, they're probably going to get that answer. Unless the board's attorney tells me that's protected. You know, our, our approach as a consulting firm has always been, and this is what we're doing right now with the homeowners out there. That's why we're, you know, we're spending time with them, we're talking to them on the phone, we're wanting to make sure they understand, there hasn't been anything, I don't think there's been questions that haven't gotten answered. And if they haven't, it's just a matter of us getting back to them again.
So, so, moving off that, the question that I had was, you all did the preliminary study that was presented to the council and the commissioners, and to the public, which recommended the creation of the sewer district, and, and then also probably recommended to the, the Sewer Board, beginning at PSA One, right?
Right.
Lots of members of the public have asked the question continually, has anyone done a study that tells us why we need to do the, the work at the lakes, right? There have been continual references to the soil and water study of the headwaters of the Yellow River. What in that headwaters of the Yellow River study that has been referenced continually as a justification of this project would be, or could be possibly resolved by the creation of the $22 million sewer system at the lakes?
Well, I'll be real honest with you, I'm not familiar with the study. We did not use it. We, we did our, we, we, we used our standard approach, where we were listening to the community. When I first got involved, so I was working directly with the Clean Water Task Force. And I think there was a commissioner assigned to that, and a couple of other citizens, some folks that were in the business of wastewater, of course, the Health Department, Dr. Hallam in Faith, and, and Faith predecessor, Christine Stinson, Stinson. And so, Melon presented that report to me and said, can you justify sewer with this report? And I probably said, that's not enough.
Because I would say that the presentation that we received told us that because of the ECO line that was found in the Yellow River in the headwaters, that's why we needed a sewer system. That's how it was presented.
Okay, well, I, I would, I would say that from, from the Health Department's perspective, from Dr. Hallam's perspective, I could see why he would consider that to be a very important factor. I could see that.
So if...
From JPR's, from JPR's perspective, we are obviously aren't making a decision as to whether there was a project going to happen or not. What our, what our, what our focus and only job is, is to enable the project and, and put it through its processes. And we don't, we really are counting on the community to justify or decide whether the project is right for them.
Yeah, Mr. President, so you, so you've been through the slide presentation that was made to the council and the commissioners to justify the creation of the sewer district. Would you agree with me that it drew a direct connection between the, the, the need to protect the, the water based on the data in that study, between the need to...
It, it was pretty, it was colored. You can use words to color your position or, or not. So I, again, what I read, it sounded pretty dire and ominous that there needed to be something done. And again, there's probably other information out there. If you build a water task force, you know, again, we got the recommendation to fund sewer district, and there was a vote. I think, again, I'm, I'm just a little flummoxed how the financial advisors, three weeks after we voted, came out with the $200 million a month. It would have been so easy to give it to us a month before. And the vote probably should have never taken place, because everyone thought the price was 75 to 85, there was no disclosure whatsoever. I'm not saying it was you guys, but I'm just saying, you know, the vote may have been hurried, rushed, and then the next thing you know, we get some sort of figure at 2.08. I think that's probably the biggest obstacle to the project, the cost. And you just said, it's possible. We could double, now we're talking 400. And if the USDA grants dry up, I don't see how this project gets funded without laws.
Yeah, so I, I want to say one more thing, I'll hand it off to Mrs. Cox. So, I'd like it to be on the record, that this project, whether it ends up being $22 million or $30 million or $40 million, is absolutely scientifically not able to resolve the contamination issue that was, that was identified in the study that was the justification for this project.
Ken, can I clarify one thing? You're not getting that.
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm a member of the government. First of all, you're calling me mad.
I just want to go right back to the ban, I'm still stuck on that. So, if the ban, the board decides not to move forward, does the bank get stuck with that debt? Or does the Sewer Board have to find a way to pay for it?
I'd say the latter.
Okay, they, they stayed at 3.75 million, and you gave the number of 628 loans. That's $5,971.34. And we're gambling with their money.
Okay, let me say, I had a question.
I do, I do have a question here for you, because this process is so fun. I got to ask this question. Say this, PSA One gets completed, we're, we're at the point of monthly rate paying, what percentage of that monthly rate goes towards funding the next PSA project? Or are we at square one again, with PSA Two, going through the exact same thing we are now?
Yeah.
And, and the reason I ask that is, in five years, six years, if we go forward with this and it's completed,
And, and the reason I ask that is, in five years, six years, if we go forward with this and it's completed, everybody in that next PSA is gonna forget all about what we're doing right now. And we get to rinse and repeat this all over again.
Yeah, I would say that the expectation, uh, overall, is that every single project is self-funded.
Okay, self-funded. So, so we, this enjoyable treat will get to happen another twelve times?
So, we, so we.
The project's going forward, right? Yes.
Okay, hold on a second, does any of the members wanna ask questions or, or my comments?
I just, I just wanna make a comment that it's, I mean, they're doing what they were hired to do. And, you know, that, the board told you to go ahead with this project, to do whatever. And I, you know, if I tell my wife that I wanna build a pole barn, we're okay with it, I can't, you know, they're building a pole barn for me, right? So, I think that's kind of where we're at here with all of the spending and everything. And I think they, I kind of understand at least where you guys are at, because you're at the direction of the board with what's going on.
Okay. Any other comments?
One quick question. Earlier, you mentioned about, um, the, you know, the, the interest that's being charged from the bank now for this loan, or it's a line of credit?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, bond anticipation, so it is kind of a, a line of credit, yeah.
You said it was paying its own interest?
At some point in time, it won't be.
Why, why is it paying its own interest now?
They may be investing part of it.
Okay, that, that was my question.
That would be typical that they would do that. They took it all out, right? Essentially, they took all the money out.
No, we're not taking money out of the, uh, borrowing more money to pay the interest.
Right, right, right.
Exactly.
That's typically the way it's done.
Paying out of tax, and, and, yeah.
I'm not, I, I, like I said, I'm not the fiscal advisor, uh, for the district, so I'm not hundred percent, percent sure how they're doing it, but that would be typical.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, one, last question I have for you, sir. Um, if every project's self-funding, why didn't we just go with the conservatory district? What was, what was the advantage of going to a sewer district?
Countywide. Uh, yeah, typically, um, so, when we first started working with the, uh, county, the, uh, the number of, uh, areas of concern, uh, priority service areas is what they ended up being called, was significant. And, um, a conservancy district, um, for, you know, to form a conservancy district, it's similar in steps, except for, uh, it, it, um, it doesn't approve at IDM, it's approved at the Department of Natural Resources and the, and the, uh, and a local court. And, uh, it's a good program, we work for several conservancy districts. Typically, what they are focused on are smaller, uh, independent projects. And, um, you know, like, like, uh, Bass Lake, Bass Lake is a conservancy. You know, Pretty Lake is a conservancy. And so, they have one project, that's all they're focused on. In this case, there were multiple areas all across the county that, that we looked at and, uh, and, and developed preliminary, you know, plans for. And, and those were areas considered by, uh, the health department to be, to be areas that probably wouldn't be, um, considered to be, you know, sustainable in the way they were handling their wastewater. And, uh, and a lot of that had to do with the, the lack of records, the lack of, you know, just passage of time. Or, you know, in a lot of cases, in some of those communities, in those unincorporated communities, there was just no record of how it got done, when it got done, and, and, uh, and no space to take care of it if it had to be replaced. And, so that's kind of how that happened, as far as I remember. And we looked at, all together, there were fifteen. And then, um, Stan and I went out to Tyne and Teagarden, we got handed our walking papers. And, uh, and so, on the way back, I think Stan said, we're taking them out. And so, we took them out.
Took them out.
No, it didn't, it didn't make, it didn't make financial sense.
Yeah, there were, there were, there were no, there were no, there weren't any good answers over there. A lot of conservancy district is also overseen by, uh, an elected board of directors that has, uh, authority to assess your property taxes. That's why they're elected.
A little bit.
Kind of the conflict, the other conflict we're working out here too, that kind of been a bluster.
Yeah. Like, I think we've heard a, a lot of expert testimony. I do wanna give the public just a quick opportunity to, to weigh in for or against. We'll start with, uh, we'll start with an opposition comment, okay? You have your hand up, come up please.
Hi, good evening. My name's, my name is Serena Anderson, I live on Tomahawk Trail.
Can you sign in, please?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, um, so, just a couple of things. I have a statement, but then things popped up as I listened to the engineers. So, there was, can you hear me okay?
Okay. But I, I, I don't wanna, um, I would ask you to keep your three, three minutes.
Absolutely, I will talk fast. So, um, Coon Lake was brought up in saying how it's been great. Theirs is roughly sixty dollars a month for their payment. Um, I think that is a major difference compared to what we're looking at. The two hundred and eight dollar, uh, number has been kind of thrown out, but in April, uh, Baker Tilly presented us with a rate study, and worst-case scenario is actually going to be two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eight cents. So, it's already surpassed the two hundred and eight. So, I just wanna make sure that, that is aware as well. Um, couple of things, I, there are other counties in Indiana that also have lakes that don't have a sewer district. They have a drainage board that works with a wastewater treatment plant, that works with the health department. And it's just kind of, all these people are working together, and there's oversight, and there's multiple, you know, voting. I personally, and I also feel like I'm speaking on, speaking on behalf of many others, we do not need a sewer board that has been so, lack of transparency, misleading, who is not taking into consideration the people, who obviously has showcased lack of respect for their authority, or lack of acknowledging that they have authority figures over them. I do have a big question, though. We're supposedly in PSA one, going to have to repay this three million dollars perchance? How is that going to be billed to us?
I think it's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah, medically, I think it'd have to under your property tax bill.
Gotcha.
That could be an assessment from what I read in, in the statute, but hopefully, they quit spending money. I think that's probably.
Wait a minute, okay, um, let's see. So, I also, we kind of were not told at all that there was pharmaceutical contaminants that are in the water. Again, that was just kind of something else that was thrown at us every time we seemed to disprove the reasons that the sewer board is giving us. Um, but how is the city treating pharmaceutical overflow that they put into the rivers at times? How has that been treated by the city?
That's a good question.
I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I understand that when you're on, you know, chemotherapy, your urine is radiation, but there is specifics that your doctor tells you how to do with that. So, I'm just kind of concerned that pharmaceutical contaminants is maybe not as prominent as what we are being told. Um, so, my last statement is just, I am here completely against the sewer board in general. I do believe it needs to be dismantled. They have proven over and over again that they are not for the people. They lack the transparency, and this isn't even a financial burden anymore. This is the lack of integrity of the board that has just been an embarrassment to the community. Um, and I think that there are other options available to help those that do need it, because we are not against people that need help with their septic. So, I think there's other issues.
Uh, other side, anyone would like to come forward with a statement of support? Go ahead, sir.
Is there, is there room for somebody that's in the middle?
Have a seat. Have a seat. They're sitting there, they're looking through chairs. Say your name, please, sign in, sir.
Uh, my name is Ernie Young. I do not live on the rip of their own property, and I'm a taxpaying property owner. So, much of the information that I have heard is a one-sided and slowly bent, and that disappoints me severely. A gentleman over here says he's got eight hundred signatures. How many of those are residents?
All of them.
All of them, right here.
They're high in your district?
Yes.
Okay.
All in the PSAs.
You, you, you've got eight hundred signatures.
Speak, please.
You have eight hundred signatures, but we only have six hundred properties involved in the district.
Ernie, Ernie, speak, speak to us, please, thank you.
Well, you, you were talking eight hundred signatures, and there's only six hundred properties in the district.
They said it's in the PSAs, so there's several PSAs that are looking for sewer. You know, PSA one, you're the first, but there's several others. They're going to Burr Oak, they're going to Enwood, they're going to some of the subdivisions south of.
Right now, we're dealing with this one.
And we're, we're concerned what's coming next. If there's thinking high bills over here, you know, PSA, uh, PSA one.
Yeah, but it's very misleading when you're talking somebody in Burr Oak or Tyne or something else, and then talking Cook, or I can put it.
Excuse me, but Mr. Woodmore did testify stating that in the PSA one area, he felt roughly eighty percent were against it. So, that is some sort of feedback.
And we'll get those numbers separated, and we'll, we'll figure out where those signatures are from, so.
Go ahead, please.
Um, a gentleman said that, uh, the IDM denies an order to have this done. Was it a recommendation, a suggestion, or just, I mean, crap hits the fan, nobody wants to stand in front of the family anymore?
It's not an order, they, the IDM does not order you, um, to do that. They did not order Marshall County to do that.
What did they say? If it was an order, was it a recommendation, a suggestion?
And, uh, we disagree with the characterization, characterization of these activities being ordered pursuant to action by our agency. It's not, they can't, they don't, um.
I realize they can't order it.
Yeah.
But then, what did they really say? Why did they get involved in that?
Because they petitioned.
If they can't answer that, they would have to answer that.
The statute, they're the agency that orders the creation of the entity. So, they did issue a one-page order that says, you've met, you've petitioned us, you've met all the requirements to create this new entity that's created. But then, what I think Mr. Shaddick's saying is that the agency then doesn't get into the affairs of what the board decides to do. They don't tell the board, you're mandated to go create a sewer. That's up to the board to make that decision.
Yeah, but they were involved in it.
In creating it.
In creating the creation of it.
Um, the gentleman from Sludge, he talked about the system, how it works, but there's no comment what happens to pharmaceuticals, nitrates, personally, can you really, what is it, throw into that water?
I think, I think you did make the comment that it reduces all of that.
But they don't go away. They may get reduced, but they do not go away.
Thirty more seconds, please.
Um, and the young lady was just up there, she made reference to the fact of chemotherapy and radiation. Uh, just because somebody's on chemotherapy does not mean they're radioactive. My wife is going through, she doesn't write up after that.
Thank you, sir.
More information being spread.
Okay. Next, would anyone like to speak, uh, go ahead. I'd like you to state your name, please, sign in after.
Mr. Ernie here. I'm Julie Mans, I'm a registered nurse in this community. I'm here today to thank you all for being here, and I'd like to address you by your titles, the Honorable Commissioners and County Councils. I appreciate you in listening to all of us. I, as a nurse, have to be non, non-judgmental in taking care of patients. This sewer project sounded like a great idea at the time. And with many of my patients, you know, they say, hold my beer, it sounded like a great idea at the time. But we don't have sustainability. Um, I do also want to reference that there are a couple of sewer board members here today who I hold with high respect. I don't feel that they're in any wrong, they're doing in what they believe in. But, I'm here today to write to you about my deep concerns with the Marshall County Sewer Project. Many of these residents, including myself, have sought answers about the scope, the cost, and the impact of this initiative. Yet, we're only given three minutes to speak at these public meetings for a sewer board that often leaves us with more questions than answers. The board has been warned, uh, that the non-compliance could result in fines, even liens placed on our homes. This has created an atmosphere of fear and intimidation, rather than collaboration and transparency. When we attempt to reach out, we are met with voicemails, and rarely return calls from JPR. Now, these gentlemen appear to be very professional, and I have no problems with them, they came to my home. Uh, but requests for public records are routed through the board's legal counsel, which Nicole Cox can confirm. Further complementing the access to information that should be readily available to the public. This public not only financially stressful, or this project, it has become a mandate. Whether we like it or not, the sewer is going to happen. Several residents have filed complaints with the IDM, we've written to the Attorney General, we've written to the Indiana State Board of Accounts, Representative Jack Jordan, and Senator Mike Boetek. Our collective fear is that this project proceeds as planned, many of our neighbors will lose their homes. I may be able to afford this sewer project, but the median household income in Marshall County is sixty-eight thousand dollars for a family. Yet, the sewer board has failed to secure any, I hate to call it grant funding, what is it called, state revolving funds? For two consecutive years, they have lacked county support. Do you not have the backing, the majority of those residents affected by this project? Despite this, they use the radio, social media, to question the validity of our concerns, asking where we got our numbers. The truth is, we've had to research most of this on ourselves, because we've been met with silence. I support the dissolution of the current sewer board, and I agree with Bill Woodmore's proposal to establish an alternative task force along with Nicole Cox. The health department also appears to be strongly in favor for the sewer system. But in today's economic climate, this appro, this approach is not financially sustainable. We must explore and document alternative solutions, such as aerobic systems. We should prioritize, prioritize what is best for our community, not what's easiest for this board. We're not against this progress. We are against being ignored, intimidated, and forced into financial ruin. I urge you to listen to the people you serve and take meaningful action to restore trust, transparency, and fairness in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are now past the nine o'clock hour, so we've, we've been here for three hours, and, yeah, is it, is it possible, unless anyone has something really urgent and novel to add to us, that we could, well, um?
Can I just ask one clarification question from our lawyers? So, with what she was just talking about, this could be liens, this could be suing the people who put in the septic who can't afford it, and can't pay those bills. So, if it goes out and it's thirty thousand dollars, and they can't afford it, then we're gonna look at putting liens on their houses, and we're gonna look at suing those people.
I don't know what the recourse is for the ban. The attorney for the sewer district's here, he'd probably be in the best position to answer that.
Do you care to come out? I feel like that's a pretty important question.
State your name, please.
Um, Christopher Newspom, attorney for the Marshall County Regional Sewer District. Sorry, again. Yeah. I'll, I'll do that. So, I, I think it's a little disingenuous for there to be comments about the transparency of the district. The district has always been transparent, it's always made sure. Please, let me just make. We've always made sure that the information's available, answer the questions to the best of our ability. Unfortunately, sometimes, those conversations stop when an answer's not what they wanna hear, and words can be distorted. When the comments were made about, long down the road, when the property and the district's actual facilities have been built, and the sewer is ready and available, conversation that they're referring to, I believe was myself that answered it at the time. You know, what happens if we don't connect? There's two situations, one hasn't even come to fruition yet. Everybody within the district. Everybody within the district is entitled to apply and receive an exemption to connection if their septic system's not failing. It's pretty simple.
I'm clear if I'm right, because it's only ten years, correct?
Ten years with two possible five-year extensions.
God, who makes the.
I'm sorry, I'm.
When it was built, correct?
Not when it was built, that law's been changed, it's from the date that an onsite water professional certifies in writing that it is not failing.
I, I think there are some, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think there are some qualifications that would just, it's not automatic, right?
It's, it's not, but they're, they're not subjective. It's, they're, it, it, the district has no subjective, uh, purpose in, in these exemptions, you know, there's three things.
They just approve those.
The, the district does, the district, and, and it's not, we don't approve them, we acknowledge that you qualify for an exemption. And that's simply that the, uh, system was new at the time of installation, um, it, it isn't failing, and I'm forgetting one right now. But they're, they're all very benign, there's nothing that, um, that we have, if an onsite water professional certifies to us in writing, um, then it, then it would be approved, noted, reminder set out when the ten year would follow the five years, things like that.
Well, we need some, some eye contact from Mr. Labid here, Mark, so do you have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Poulter's question was, what happens to the note, the sewer district?
But I think you're asking about liens.
I'm asking about the lien on the house.
So, yeah, so that was, again, sorry to be long-winded, but it, it is about the process. And so ultimately, if the sewer's ready and available, someone did not qualify for an exemption, which that time hasn't come yet, and they do notice, they have to be given notice, the district would give every opportunity for them to ac- acquire that exemption. Then one of the tools in the district's tool belt, and it's not one that the district is obligated to exercise, but it is a statutory option that they have, is that if someone does not connect, they can access a failure to connect penalty.
Hmm.
And then that would, uh, the district's rates and charges are treated just like for collection purposes, taxes.
And so they can end up on a, a tax bill.
So we're gonna take people's houses over sewer?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, no, most of them are for now.
Nobody's taking anyone's houses.
If it's for taxes, and they put it on their tax bill, and you don't pay your tax bill, then it goes back for taxes to the county.
Yep, and so if they're not paying, if they're not paying.
They're gonna lose their houses.
Yeah, if they're not paying their county taxes, and they're, and they're not paying the county taxes, and it's eligible for tax, it has to be eligible for tax sale. Somebody'd have to be not paying their county taxes as well.
They're gonna pay for a year, and then the sheriff, they have a sheriff's sale, and then those people who couldn't afford to hook up now are gonna lose their house.
Mm-hmm.
Over a septic system. But we have been going back and forth whether or not we even need at this point, but we are at the point where we're talking about driving people out of their homes.
Yeah, and I think the answer to that is, is simply that if their septic system was not failing, then they have an exemption. If their septic system's failing, then they have another real problem, that the district is here to hopes, help have a solution.
What if I'm saying that, on average, your people will get exemptions?
It's not, if you apply and you're, and you meet the criteria, then you get the exemption. So it's just up for the people to apply for the exemption.
So if your septic system is functioning fine, you're having no issues?
And it's, and you, you, you get it, exactly.
So then.
So, what, what if it's thirty-eight-year-old system?
If it's not failing, you qualify.
Not failing, it's ending.
So, my question is, why are we doing the sewer system if everybody's not failing? If everybody would fi- qualify for an exemption, why would we do this?
I'm trying to be clear, if I can understand those side factors.
I think that would be a, I think that would be a question better suited for the Health Department, because not to put words in their mouth, I believe the answer would be, they are.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's move on, if we, if we.
No, no, what I want to do, he, he said, but he can't even tell me that my name's failing. So to say that they are, when the doctor couldn't say, answer the question, how many are failing, he couldn't remember that they approximately seven for dry well system, but he couldn't get a number for failing system.
I believe by.
So to say that they're failing is an incorrect statement, you don't know that they are.
I, I think they. Sure, I think what Dr. Holland was saying is that a dry well system by definition is failing.
Yeah, but, but that's not, you can't do the number of, actually failing.
He hasn't yet answered the original question yet.
Okay, so Jesse wants to chime in.
I'd, yeah, I'd, I'd like to double back to the original question, the reason we invited you to the front.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was Mr. Hirsch.
The, the question, the question was, uh, what happens, um, if the ban, or some, how does the ban get repaid if the sewer isn't built?
That is a great question, it's not something that any of the project team members that are part of the district's team have ever had to question. Um, because every single project that we've worked on has been completed, been funded by SRF, had a reasonable rate. So that's something that we will have to figure out together with the board on how we tackle that issue.
So your, so your board says that the project doesn't move forward at two hundred and twenty dollars a month, and we don't know how we pay off the bond, or pay off the ban unless we move the project forward?
Yeah, I don't think that the conversation stops at that, because at the end of the day, as JPR noted, there are options to break it down into smaller pieces, and then make sure that they can get multiple bites at the apple with SRF to help buy down and subsidize that rate for all the constituents.
Okay, Adam would like to chime in, and then we got to close this one up.
It, it's, it's just a quick question for you, and it's.
That doesn't mean, I'll answer it quickly.
It is partially maybe put my own mind, it is kind of, kind of something I have lingered in the back of my mind. Cause this sewer board is, it has immense power, considering it's not an elected board.
Sure.
For every board I've known, and since I've gotten in the whole political arena, on the council and commissioners, there's always been some type of checks and balances to provide accountability.
Sure.
What is the mechanism to provide that to the sewer board right now?
That's the appointing authority, so each of, yeah, as you noted, five members have appointments, or the commissioners have five appointments, the city implement has one, and the county council has one. The appointments, and I don't wanna get into discussion about elimination, but there's two, two things there, appointing, you know? And so when appointments come up, decisions can be made. And the other item is, you know, a lot of the concern generally surrounds rates. And as Commissioner Rohanen had mentioned, the commissioners are the regional authority. And so at some point, when a rate is adopted, then there is oversight to make sure that that rate is appropriate. And that means that it meets the debt obligations and collects no more than is necessary to service the system, operate the system, pay for the capital replacement of the system, and service the debt.
So, so if I, so if I can rephrase what you just said in layman's terms, the commissioner's only power over the rate unless the project has been built, is that we just can't charge more than the absolute minimum that it takes to repay the liens and then things that you guys have already taken out.
Sure.
So what effective control do we actually have?
Appointment.
So, because the rate setting is basically just a function of how big your project is.
It's a, yeah, legislative function of the district.
Yep.
Okay, it's time to move on, I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Folks, I'm so glad you guys came, I'm gonna close the public comment right now, cause I do want the members to follow up, I wanna, just a quick discussion. These guys actually have a potential meeting, uh, I'm not sure that's gonna happen, but.
Oh, that's gonna happen.
Okay, I know, cheers.
So, let, let's, you all have heard a lot of testimony, we've made some comments, a lot of us, uh, obviously, have made our, uh, positions known. I would like to say, uh, personally, I've studied this issue quite a bit, and, uh, it's not a hard decision for me. My, uh, research was thorough, and I've, I've studied the issue quite a bit, but would anyone like to chime in? Yeah, talk about some stuff, thank you for.
Yeah, JPR's question is all about that. That, we're looking at this thing involving, and that is, in fact, that we have started out with, they got the seventy-five thousand dollars, then, um, they kept coming to the commissioners or council looking for funding, it says in one of the, uh, minutes, we're not getting any money from the council, and then, uh, they went for the ban. And so, this is, it's kind of one-sided, um, and, uh, just thinking of how big this project is, and when you start looking at the Baker-Tully assessments, just don't pay attention to the grant section, because it appears that we're spending money and we're gonna, um, just the, uh, the, the debt section, and that just makes it go up. Another concern is, they're seeing property values increase seventy-four percent, so if you're looking at two-twenty-nine, on the, the high end for payment, and then your property goes up, you're seeing a lot more, uh, monthly expense in that. Uh, what are those other options out there, this, uh, offer to dissolve this board a hundred percent? It's just nothing but. Like I said, you know, you almost had six, three, three, three point seven, um, five million dollar ban, it's six grand. You're running six grand with these people.
Yeah.
Um, and it's unfulfilled.
Can I comment?
Go ahead, you next.
Thank you. Um, number one, I appreciate commissioners and council all being here tonight, okay, and I appreciate all the public coming and weighing in.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I will tell you, I've sat here, I've been in this project from the start, which is not what it was intended to be. I'll just say that, uh, leave it at that. This was never supposed to get to this point, where we was looking at two hundred dollars, I'd like to say a few weeks after. That was not the premise that was presented to us when we were, when we voted on it. Having said that, I made the comment to several people, even some of the sewer board members in private, spending has to stop. But it hasn't, if anything, they've thundered nose at us. And frankly, I'm very upset, and I've lost, I have friends on that board that I don't have loose friendships over, but I can't with conscience let this go on. So I proposed to the commissioners on members meeting, a resolution that we're gonna take, if we agree, we're gonna take IDM, the commissioners are, and ask for this board to be dissolved, so at this point in time, I'm, Sean, will you read that resolution?
Oh, again, I can, it's very long.
So it's in, it, yeah, be brief, it's in the record.
Okay.
And they give the number too, please.
All right, so this is Resolution Number twenty-two-five-dash-nine, a resolution of the Marshall County Board of Commissioners regarding the proposed dissolution of the Marshall County Regional Sewer District. Whereas on March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, respectively, the Marshall County Board of Commissioners and the Marshall County Council adopted a joint resolution, support, supporting the filing of a petition with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management for the establishment of a regional sewer district to be known as the Marshall County Regional Sewer District. To provide sewer service to unincorporated areas of Marshall County. Thereafter, on, or about April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, the commissioners filed their petition to establish a regional sewer district with IDM. Whereas on December twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, IDM entered an order establishing the district. As part of IDM's order, the agency found in part that the district, quote, "appears capable of accomplishing the purposes of the district in an economically feasible manner," end quote. At this time, the commissioners no longer believe that statement holds true. For various reasons, the district is not economically feasible, fair, or reasonable. Whereas Indiana Code Section thirteen dash twenty-six dash six dash four, which applies to regional sewer districts, provides that if IDM, quote, "determines that the project or operation of the district is not economically feasible, fair, or reasonable," I've inserted IDM here, I think it says department in the actual quote, um, "may declare the district dissolved and enter an order for the distribution of all assets owned by the district after the payment of liabilities," end quote. The purpose and intent of this resolution is for the commissioners to approve petitioning IDM to dissolve the district. Now therefore, be it resolved by the commissioners as follows. Section one, for many reasons, the district is not economically feasible, fair, or reasonable. Some of those reasons are outlined below. Subsection A, the district is unreasonable because the council was not made aware of the actual estimated monthly service rates that would authorize its creation. If the council had been aware of the proposed rates, it likely would not have voted to authorize the district's creation. The council is the fiscal body for Marshall County. Indiana Code Section thirteen dash twenty-six dash two dash two subsection A provides that a petition to dis- establish a regional sewer district may only be filed with IDM, quote, "after being authorized by the fiscal body." As shown below, a divided council providing its, provided its authorization by a five-to-two vote on March fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And then, uh, the resolution has an image of the signature page from that resolution. At the time the council gave its authorization, it was only presented that the Marshall County Clean Water Task Force report, as shown below, the estimated monthly sewer rates to be between seventy-five dollars to eighty-five dollars per month, uh, it has an image from that report. There were concerns about the monthly rates raised in the council debate, even when the rates were proposed at seventy-five dollars to eighty-five dollars. However, only after the horse was out of the barn, the council gave its authorization on, on, and the council gave its authorization, on April second, twenty-twenty-two, the project's financial advisor issued a preliminary rate analysis, shown below, which then set the estimated monthly bill between ninety-five dollars to two hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, and has an image, uh, from that report. That increases approximately twenty-six percent to two hundred and forty-five percent more than the proposed rates pitched to the council, and upon which it gave its authorization. That is unreasonable. Only three of the present members of the council were members in twenty-twenty-two, and of those members, two voted against the establishment of the district. Majority of the current council membership opposes the district. Subpart B, the district is not economically feasible because the economic landscape is drastically different now than when this project was first conceived. The Marshall, the district is an outgrowth of the work of the Marshall County Clean Water Task Force, which began in twenty-nineteen. Since that time, the global, national, state, and local economy has changed dramatically. Marshall County, like its sister counties, weathered the global, uh, global pandemic and soaring inflation. Uh, has a, just a graph of inflation, which I think everybody's familiar, uh, from the Congressional Budget Office is showing inflation from twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-three, um, which was significant. The county has been mired in, or the country has been mired in social and political unrest, with ripple effects being felt from city main streets to the campaign stump, to the halls of government, to Wall Street. Wars have broken out throughout the world, and global trade has been disrupted. All of these factors have impacted financial markets and the pocketbooks of Marshall County residents. The state has been in a property tax crisis, with gross assessed values for commercial, industrial, and residential properties throughout Indiana collectively rising twelve percent from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five alone. That is following prior years of growth. As shown below, Marshall County has felt those increases. Uh, this has a, a image from a study from the Department of Local Government Finance, uh, on property taxes due and payable in twenty-twenty-six, which, uh, shows comparable increases to the statewide average that was mentioned before. Energy prices of all kinds have skyrocketed. A recent study, as shown below, revealed that from July twenty-twenty-four to July twenty-twenty-five, among Indiana's five investor-owned electric utilities, bills went up seventeen point five percent, or twenty-eight dollars a month on average statewide. Uh, this has a graph that, of that study that was just released in July by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, uh, twenty-twenty-five electricity residential bill survey, uh, which includes, uh, statistics from, uh, WIBSCO, and the investor-owned utility that does service Marshall County. Approximately forty-four point three percent of Marshall County residents are older adults and seniors, a rate nearly three percent more than the statewide statistics. Additionally, the county's per capita personal income is just eighty-seven point five percent of the statewide statistics. In light of the county's population, the commissioners have heard many concerns about the impact the proposed sewer project will have on seniors on fixed incomes, such as that shared by Frank Indra's, um, and these were comments from, uh, the transcript of the February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two public meeting regarding the proposed district. Uh, Frank Indra's, of address seventeen-one oh six Mill Pond, Indiana, posed this question. "I don't have any elaborate words, but I just wanted to say, I don't think it's a good idea. A lot of people have moved out of the coun- the county to get away from, out to the country, to get away from city water, sewage, and stuff of that nature. A lot of our elderly communities are living on the lakefront and are on fixed incomes, and may not be able to afford to have the extra seventy-five to a hundred dollars a month. So I was hoping that I would come in here, hear that it would be an optional hookup. I fear that of not being optional, you're going to force a lot of people out of their homes, thank you." County residents have been walled by the economic turmoil discussed above. Help is on the way with initiatives like the Governor, Governor Braun's Freedom and Opportunity Agenda, delivering historic property tax relief. Delivering Historic Property Tax Relief, and the Trump administration's one big beautiful bill delivering no tax on social security and permanently increasing the child tax credit for agender families. However, those efforts are just the first steps in helping dig the coun- the county's residents out of a big hole, not of their own making. The looming costs of the district threaten to undo the gains made for the residents of the district. For all these reasons, the district is not economically feasible. Subsection C, the district is not fair because it is not responsive to the people it proposes to serve. When the commissioners petitioned IDIM to establish the district, they envisioned the entity as one that would be responsive to the people of Marshall County by being responsive to the elected officials who appointed the individual trustees who govern the district. That was my last sub. The petition, as shown below, addressed vacancies on the board governing, uh, the, on the governing board, providing. And it has a image from subsection E from one of the pages of the petition, uh, to IDIM, which says, "Upon a vacancy on the board of trustees for any reason, the appointing authority for that trustee shall be required to appoint a replacement trustee to complete the term of the trustee who vacated his office within fourteen days of the notification of the vacancy." With that provision, including the, quote, "vacancy for any reason," unquote, language, the commissioners intended the trustees, the marsh- of the district, to serve at the will of the authority who appointed them. Indiana courts have recognized such language to be synonymous with, quote, "at-will removal." Appointees serve at the pleasure of some entity and may be removed for any reason or no reason at all, end quote, with citation to a twenty twenty two Court of Appeals decision. Earlier this year, the commissioners invited the appointing president of the district board of trustees, Thomas McFadden, to attend the commissioners' meeting to discuss the many concerns about the district the residents have been raising. Mr. McFadden decided not to attend the meeting. Mr. McFadden's actions prompted the commissioners to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty five dash sixteen, which reaffirms their intent at the time of the district's establishment that the trustees serve at the pleasure of their appointing authority. The ordinance further exercised the commissioner's home rule authority to presently declare that members of the board of trustees of the district are subject to at-will removal. Thereafter, the commissioners declared Mr. McFadden's trustee seat vacant and appointed a new member to replace him. Mr. McFadden does not recognize the commissioner's authority to remove him and has refused to vacate his office, asserting that he will fulfill his remaining four-year term and is only removable for cause. The commissioners and Mr. McFadden are now engaged in litigation over his refusal to leave office in the Alcart Superior Court, too, listing the cause number of that case. Unlike the board the commissioners created, the district has become an insular entity with a single-minded focus on building a sewer and unwillingness to entertain the diverse options of and solutions raised by the residents they serve. Additionally, as shown below, the entity the commissioners petitioned IDIM to create was to be served by an advisory board of public officials. And it provides, uh, a, a quote image of paragraph thirteen from the petition, which says, "Review and consulting board." The Marshall County Regional Sewer District Consulting Board, Consulting Board shall be a non-voting entity that will provide technical assistance to the district. The consulting board shall consist of the following. A, representatives of the Marshall County Health Department. B, representatives of the Marshall County Surveyors Office. C, representatives of the Marshall County Commissioners Office. The review and consulting board would have been yet another measure of oversight linking the district to elected officials who are responsive to the people of Marshall County. The district has never formed or convened the, the review and consulting board. The commissioners understand that the district is an independent, useful corporation. However, they did not establish the district to be an insular and unaccountable institution. They intended the trustees that lead the district to serve at the will of the commissioners, the council, and the mayor of Plymouth, the elected officials who appointed them. The district trustees have gone rogue and are not responsive to the people, and that is not fair. Section two of the resolution, pursuant to Indiana Code Section thirteen dash twenty six dash six dash four, upon dissolution of a sewer district, IDIM must consider, quote, "payment of liabilities," end quote, of the district. At this time, the district has sold a three million seventy five thousand dollar bond anticipation note to Star Financial Bank, which is to be repaid upon the issuance of bonds to finance the construction of the district's first sewer project. To facilitate the dissolution of the district, the commissioners stand ready to provide funding to retire the district's obligations under the ban. Section three of the resolution, the experiment of the district has revealed that the countywide regional sewer district is not the right fit for the residents of Marshall County. It presents an expensive, one-size-fits-all solution. The commissioners believe that many septic issues can be addressed utilizing new technologies for system replacement while working with the Marshall County Health Department under four ten Indiana Administrative Code, Section six dash eight point three dash fifty three subsection I, which is the good judgment rule that had been discussed previously. Going forward, if local residents determine a need to develop sewer services individually, individual conservancy districts formed by a majority of willing participants would be a better option. The district, as its board of trustees views it, is not responsive to the people. The commissioners are responsive to the people, and in the spirit of Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One, they are exercising the people's pro indefeasible right to alter and reform their government, end quote. The commissioners urge IDIM to dissolve the Marshall County, the regional sewer district.
Is that it? If all the public understands this does not kill sewers in the county, which just kills this project right now or resets a stop on the spending. Like you said, conservative districts, they'll still come in and, and have sewers, if that's what they choose to do, but it takes government out of it, okay? This is also pending council approval, and I'm gonna present this to the two commissioners. I don't want to comment, but I'll be presenting this to the two commissioners at, uh, a commission meeting. We cannot vote on it now. This is, this is a work session, and, uh, uh, if the council still chooses to take it up, then you're more than welcome to.
Yeah.
Greg, listen, Greg, as soon as you come here, I would thank the commissioners
for including the proper variance in what the monthly cost would be in that resolution, ninety five to two oh eight. All evening, what we discussed is the general cost is two oh eight. And, uh, I, I, I appreciate you putting that in the resolution, ninety five to two oh eight. Thank you. Does that mean if you guys vote on this, it comes to us, and if we pass it, everybody passes that this board is dissolved?
No, no.
That's not it.
This is just a petition, so I hear it fine.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm going to meet with the governor on the twenty eighth, because I would have handled this personally.
Should, should we approve it?
Right, yeah.
You guys have to decide on it, so. Any questions on the petition or, or, uh, resolution, right? That's your resolution?
It's just a resolution.
Thank you, Sean, that was very well written. Would any other members, I'd like to have a discussion on what has been said tonight. I, I know we've heard a lot, there's lots to soak in.
I would just like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and I hope that you're more involved in government, not just for a particular issue, but I'd love to see what our meetings, just to see how government goes. I know there's several people that come and, you know, we need feedback from you guys, and I would like to have that, not for a particular issue, but just in general, of how business goes. Thank you.
I would say there's, there's really many things we, we didn't mention before, and Tim and I had talked about this the other day, um, that regardless of what IDIM's decision is, this board absolutely, without a doubt, no one will argue with the fact that we have four or five million appointments coming up in the next eighteen months. And so I think that the, the board, the, the sewer board really does need to take into consideration that the likelihood that any of you will get reappointed at this time is very low. So, so if, if the, if the council commissioners do choose to end this project in, in the next eighteen months, we absolutely have the power to do that, and the question is, how much money will you spend before we make, before we make that happen?
I, I would also like to say, we do realize that some of you are still gonna have problems. And I will tell you, it's, it's my commitment along with some of the others up here to try to help you find solutions, okay? We know you need solutions, that would be our goal, okay? Just because what we do tonight, and tonight, it's not personal, it's business, okay? I, I can't with conscience keep racking up debt, as, as Commissioner, as Councilman Shattuck has said, keep racking up debt, not knowing where the money's coming from. Uh, because if it falls back on the council, uh, excuse me, the council and commissioners to pay for this, okay? That's money we could use elsewhere, then, then for some good projects, okay? That we, we, we haven't done because we just didn't think we had the money. So, uh, please, please, whatever happens, I'd be respectful, be fair, and like I say, just understand the meaning here, okay? And what the intent is, but we know you've got problems. Uh, it's our commitment to try to help you. This is not, it's just, doing this doesn't solve the problem, it's not over, okay? Thank you.
Uh, I, I'm just kind of wondering what I take a little from tonight is as far as, because we're gonna have projects come in front of us, future projects and stuff. And like I said earlier, this needs to be a learning opportunity for how, how we navigate those projects. Is of a fair assessment of everything's kind of been put out, the primary bottleneck to this whole thing, is it just cost or is it more than that?
It's a lot of things. I mean, you gotta look at, we got what, two years, you know, to, to pay this? And then now we're gonna have to incur more debt to pay debt, you know? And that's very risky, and the risk that they will receive enough grant funding to get the project created at an affordable cost is, is, is pretty significant, so.
The risk is not acceptable.
I think the finances need to be probably looked at more adequately before decisions like this to go forward. It kind of reminds me of the jail project, to be honest with you. I mean, the cart got before the horse, and had we, you know, listened to all the experts, we would have had a jail today built for five hundred and fifty nine inmates, and we would have had a hundred and thirty in jail. And so to me, it seems like the cart got before the horse on this one, and as we go, we should have learned from the jail. We should have learned from the jail project. You'll get your numbers, uh, in line and then make a decision, because it seems to me that the numbers were the big factor in, in whether or not this, this project can be, uh, uh, you know, suitable.
Can we put checks and balances into boards before they spend money or they send contracts?
We will, we will go forward, and hopefully that's gonna happen in state legislature this year because a lot of people downstate were shocked that a, a board could borrow three million dollars. Nobody, I don't think most people knew it could happen. So it just something slipped through the cracks, but I'm hoping that's gonna be addressed. We've asked it to be addressed this year in state legislature.
Okay. Would anyone else I can make a comment, because it's probably time to, uh, skedaddle?
I would say this.
Yeah.
Uh, I like the resolution, I support the resolution, and hopefully here in the near future, the council can, uh, call a meeting and, and, uh, put this to a vote in the board as well, if we have to do that.
When do you guys meet for commissioners? Is it this month coming Monday now?
We need, we need five months.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna pass this to me, yeah.
All right. So, um, any other discussion with the committee? All right, thank you all for coming, thank you for being respectful. These guys are gonna meet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not leaving yet, we're just adjourned in this meeting.
The work session is over.